I know, we're just waiting for, see if you're all lined up.
I'm good to go.
Captioned, lined up, everything? Okay, one minute, folks. All right. Okay, make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does any board member have a conflict of interest or anything they wish to disclose regarding the agenda items tonight?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, would the, would you please read the open meetings compliance and certification or click notes?
It's gonna be a click note.
Okay.
If you're participating on Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to speak directly to the board. If you would like me to ask the board the question, please put it in the Q and A. Ask that you give your name and address. Be a little loud by law. Also, if you're in the room, same process. If you want to raise your hand, come up to the podium and then give your name and address. And I just ask everybody to be respectful and nice and move on.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, made invisible, but we're bringing justice for our own.
First thing, any public comment before we start in? Anybody online?
We have some people online.
Okay.
Okay, how many people are online? About?
One.
That's good. It's a crowd. How is it? Okay, moving on, department reports. Building inspector, Steve, you mailed that out to everybody.
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody have it needed?
Yeah, did everybody?
I'll take a hard copy.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Need a friend, yes.
Everybody.
Everybody want one?
Sure.
Okay. We're on a roll.
Thank you.
Here we go. Yep, I think. Did Justin get one? You're good, you're on line?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Steve, I'm interested in the, if you could just, you know, talk a little bit more because we're getting those points for our Climate Smart Community program. And you mentioned this in the report that we're about, you know, the grant.
Yeah, we just, we just, and it's weird, I got another email today. I sent it around. We also got another $5,000 grant from that nicer. I'm not quite sure why, but.
We must have hit some points then, again.
Maybe it's the Climate Smart.
Oh, it's two separate programs.
Yeah, they're two separate.
Yes, okay.
But at this point, we already received $5,000. We are now approved for another $10,000. The grants have to be earmarked or something for sustainability in order to actually receive the money.
So, so there's a deadline on that? Is that my understanding?
A second.
Okay, so it's coming up.
Of this, the award for the $10,000.
Okay, and then when you were working with Rob Richardson, do we all remember? He did, you know, the presentation about the program. He had recommended, because it's a, it's a high-impact.
Yes.
Okay.
We converted a good amount of the streetlights, but RZNE owns quite, you know, still a bunch of them, so what he's been working with. And it's been a laborious process because the gentleman took over. He started from scratch. So, getting numbers to actually convert the remaining streetlights, we got an estimate of just under $15,000 to convert the rest of the remaining streetlights. Rob is questioning that, just for the sure numbers, but that was.
Roughly in that ballpark, okay.
Literally, we could cover the conversion with the two grants. If we earmarked the second one for that project, we could cover the conversion of remaining LED street or remaining non-LED streetlights to LED.
Okay.
And then gain another 500 points for that.
Oh, that's why it's high-impact, because it brings us up to another.
Yeah, we gained impartial on that.
Okay.
High-impact item. Because we have a convert of all, we only gained impartial on the points.
And this way, we can complete that and get the additional points.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's a deadline for us to say, yeah, that sounds good. We, we would like to earmark this.
Yeah.
Okay, just so.
Rob's willing to do, I mean, Rob's done everything as far as the paperwork for that stuff. We just have to give him what the village would like to utilize the money for.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay, okay. And then with the, once they're converted, then part of that benchmarking is, this is what we were paying before, this is now the reduction in the energy rate.
The energy usage, Charlie and I will provide him with the data on the energy usage stage by the conversion.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
And what is, what is the cost to us for conversion? Is there a difference in the bulb? Is there some kind of retrofitting that has to go in? Like, when we convert, we have, I assume, we have to get new?
Yeah, and he put it in the report. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Basically, from the number that Aaron, the RZNE rapper, gave us, we wouldn't have to pay back.
We would use the grant money that we've just received. Okay. The 15K, and then get further points, because now we're putting it towards another sustainable initiative.
Yeah, and as I said in the report, our next level, which is a $50,000.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, it's covered by a grant that we've obviously.
Yeah, there's, we got a couple items in kind of the hopper that the Climate Smart Community that if we become a bronze member of that, we are within 200 points of getting the $50,000.
Oh, wow.
Grant.
Okay. Yeah, so, so would be the action then from this board, to say that, yeah, we would like to earmark that. And then we send a letter in? Is that what this is? We send?
Basically, I just.
Probably like a letter of intent that this is what we wanted to, I didn't, this is our first time through the process, obviously, so we're just trying to understand it. Okay, all right.
Just a question.
They don't need anything official. I just need, like, the first grant, I just emailed them.
Right, right, okay.
So, just a question, could we, not saying we will, but could we use that money as part of the cost of doing the boiler?
Oh, yeah. You can use it for anything.
Right.
We could, but do you want to talk about the, we already have the grant funding for that to be used in the building?
That's embedded in the building, in the dormitory.
Right, correct.
Dormitory.
Otherwise, we would have totally.
We couldn't use anything else. We couldn't identify anything else. New.
No, we can't identify projects.
That's why we are.
I should give up on that.
We're still going. Wheels are turning.
Yeah, $50,000 of new that they're willing to use dormitory money. It needs to be something substantial. So, the H-back is substantial.
Okay.
Steve, I have a question. You said that you were at Village Bakery looking at some interior remodeling work that they're doing?
Yeah, they did a little interior moving around of the colors. They just changed a little plumbing electric.
Okay, so there wasn't any patio renovations happening? Because I know Charlie had mentioned that he was thinking of doing some patio renovations, but there's nothing going on there?
No.
It was all internal?
No, it's all internal, just minor. But like I said, they changed some electric and plumbing, so I had nothing to add for it.
Okay, do you, do you need any action, though? I just want to close this out, because I see this as a very specific request for the, so.
The board just needs to authorize.
Just to direct you to?
To direct me to email and say, yes, we would like to, the $10,000 grant, and we earmark it towards the conversion of that.
Of all the LEDs, to two LED?
Yes.
Okay, okay, does that make sense? I mean, I think as a practical matter, it's a good thing to do, because it'll reduce our utility bills significantly, in addition to getting more points towards other grants.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking it's kind of a win-win, really. Yeah.
I will make that motion, and perhaps after, if it's a second, then we can have more discussion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any additional thoughts from people?
So, I have a question about the actual light. Does the light look different, with the LED lights? Will it look that bright blue light?
They look with the same soft lighting. And there are different lights for different areas, depending on, let's say, like, one it uses for the street, or one that's in the residential.
Historic lights.
So, the way they come, the way they disperse.
Okay. And then, do they have to go through HPB at all? Do we have to let them know? Or do they have to prove this for any reason, because we're changing the lighting?
It's, it's a light bulb. It's not, it's not actually altering the historic fixture in and of itself. It's the socket and a light bulb.
Right, but the light is not any different, the actual quality?
No, no. And in fact, Brighton is currently doing this with, I can't even remember how many hundreds of lights.
Eight hundred.
Something, yeah, eight hundred of their lights, because they have, you know, parts of Brighton, they have the historic heart lights. And so, they're kind of going first.
And just kind of sort of board notes and mayor notes here, we've got a notice from Rob and the clean energy community that the funding may be gone eventually here. So, the more we can do now while.
You want to get in the hopper.
The better we are, because after next year, there's.
Well, you never know. It's budgets. Yeah, you never know.
They may wipe out the whole.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's just budgets. You just want to make sure you're in the hopper. Yep. Okay. Any other question? Or, no? Okay. Yeah.
Sorry, so this is a motion, it's not to actually authorize the purchase of the lights with the fund money, this is just to send a letter of intent?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just to get us in the hopper.
Yeah, I think when it does come to the actual funding questions, I would, I would expect that that would be sent to the board and added to meeting material a lot of times.
Yeah, this just came up, so. Okay.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so, we'll get the letter out, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Now, that's great. It's, it's great we're moving forward on that. Okay. Next up, DPW. Glad you're back in action.
Good to call.
Okay, any questions for Zach?
Yes.
I had sent it in an email. I was wondering what the status was of our DOT applications for the benches, for the installation of the benches.
I believe there was an issue with what was approved by the board.
The benches?
Yeah, the benches, which I permit any of the boards to the DOT.
No, that, it's, the benches permit went out. It's been out.
You're talking with, you're talking.
I think you're talking us as well.
The plantings were doing on the same?
I spoke to them regarding that.
All right, then.
Sorry, not to jump there.
I didn't ask that question.
Yes, no, the applications did go out a while ago.
Yes, I was wondering if there was an update.
I haven't heard back anything.
Okay.
DOT takes the respite.
And then the planting application went out as well?
It's almost ready to go.
Okay.
So, there you go.
That was my only question.
Thank you.
Just have one question. With regards to brush pickup and tree making, obviously, the mild weather is a lot easier. How do you prioritize doing that over perhaps accelerating the repair and the work on the benches?
The work refinishing benches, it's just busy work that we do during the winter time. This year, we're at like 75% of the benches already, because we've kind of changed the process up for refinishing them. The benches, brush, depending on, you know, what's going on with the brush, if it's, if it's posing a problem with accessibility, if it's on the side of the road, and it's, you know, or just a big pile of things we picked up a little, it's a high priority thing. Typically, this kind of year, we're not routinely picking up brush. From November 1st through the end of March, we see all activities picking up brush unless someone calls and schedules it, because we'll also work well. But because, you know, the weather's been so nice, we're sticking with it.
You don't feel like with the shorter winter, your inside work, whether or not it's repair, maintenance, or benches, or other things, you want more time to get done at the expense of leaving brush on the side of the road, or you have time to do everything you need to do?
Yeah, I mean, it, it all falls in the same category of when we get to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's ongoing, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it's, one wouldn't take the rest of them over the other. It all depends on, you know, where we're at with the schedule of getting stuff done. If, you know, time's running out on getting the benches done, and we want, you know, we're starting to see a pickup in activity, you know, with the astrians and whomever being out there wanting to use the benches, we're going to, it's a higher priority, providing that we're not into the schedule of picking up brush. If, you know, people expect, people expect it at a certain point, you know, it's, it's now April 1st, and it's Monday, what time am I going to be at my house picking up brush?
Yeah, how about garbage cans? Any decision? Lily, I know we were, we're talking about garbage cans and replacements, and I know that you had sent over a couple pictures to you to see if they would fit into the existing.
Yes. Lily and I were just discussing that, actually. The, the post that was square, that's a square post trying to fit into a round hole that's in the ground. So, we're thinking about maybe buying one of those bases. It's just a sacrificial base to bring in and try it out and see where, or if it could work. There was an alternative one that was sent to me that I give, I'm going to go through some emails and look, and sent it back to you guys, but there was one that had brackets rather than a post of pedestal etc. So, four brackets that would actually individually get bolted down to the concrete, which would work pretty well for us. So, rather than having a single pedestal that the garbage can would be mounted on, it's got four bolts in it.
So, don't we have, isn't there an opportunity to just get the existing garbage can replacement so that we don't, so that we can just do it the easiest, most economical way, instead of having them? Like, can't we find the garbage can with the round?
They do exist, but whether it's exactly what's, you know, already in the sidewalk is kind of tough to say without having the actual piece or a good, clean cut sheet that's showing.
I was going to say, getting the specs.
Yes, specs.
Maybe just take a look and see if we can get some decent specs.
Yeah.
That's what we've been doing. They're not, the information that is there is not always the information that I need to be able to make a decision on or not. And keep in mind, the ones that are existing when put in, the female side of that was cast into the concrete, so it's a permanent fixture.
Right, it's very nice to use it.
If we go with something that's a little bit smaller than what's existing, we can always fill the void with epoxy or concrete, just to keep it stable, or go with a completely different one.
Yeah, well, yes. Did we determine the expense, and how many cans we were going to get, how much it was, and is it in the budget?
That's not a question for me.
Yeah, didn't you, you guys came up with a sheet at some point of what you thought we needed?
Yeah.
Maybe we need to recirculate that to the board to give it to Zach?
We'll have to really.
Let's come back with some hard numbers.
For the upcoming budget.
Yeah, okay.
But let's come back with some hard numbers.
It was, yeah. I mean, you know how much we, how much each garbage can is. So, whatever's in the budget, that'll.
Yeah, so, yeah, because I got these together. So, is there a digital copy of that?
Probably not.
Oh, there isn't? Okay, well, then we can scan it, send it out, make it happen. That'll be the action item.
Okay.
Okay? All righty. Anything else for Zach? Okay. Did you want to go over the?
Oh, yes, thank you. The portable toilet rental for the year?
Yeah.
That was in the meeting that I had.
Yeah.
Just need approval to go ahead and get those ordered.
We need them.
All right. I mean, they're still there, but it's a renewed project. United Rentals has a monopoly on portable toilets around here.
Who knew?
Every other porta potty business are basically other United Hotels pull out. So, no other white call, it's going to be United Hotels, it's coming back. So, that is what.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we need to provide this service and this amenity, you know?
And then we got a receipt for the fence. Is that something that we don't need to talk about?
Well, why don't we close out this one first, because we have to give approval of the expenditure.
So, this is, this is another roundup, okay.
It's, it's in your packet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any, anybody want to make a motion? We have a call.
I will make a motion that we accept the quote from United Rentals for porta potties for the, is it 20, 2024, 25 season?
Yes, well, April 1st.
April 1st to April 1st.
To the season.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer, please. Motion passes.
I'm sure the public will be relieved, unintended. Okay. I had to say, I know, I know, really.
Somebody had to get one.
I know, somebody had to get something in. Okay, thank you, Zach. Next up, Treasures Report, please.
Okay, I have the bill pay from the board's approval. Full bill pay is $58,963.88. Are there any questions or concerns?
Otherwise, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, the second thing I have, who's I have, February financials.
Thank you.
Oh, I want financials, okay.
Oh.
So, we are trying, which is always a great thing. So far, I know I keep sounding like a broken record. I, oh, I love my phone. There, nothing too disconcerting going on. Everything looks status quo. I do have a few budget transfers that were kind of anticipated. Again, except for repairing the streetlights we had to chase. I think there was sewer, for unexpected sewer expenses that sewer is responsible for, so we need to make those transfers as well. Is there anything the board has any questions on within the report? I mean.
I just had one question about transfers. Should we go through the report first, though, and approve that, or?
Yeah. Yeah, it's two separate things. But again, I just want to highlight, interest has been our friend.
Yeah, the interest has really helped.
Yes, it has.
I'll make a motion to approve the February financials as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
So, I just have a question.
Oh, yeah, discussion, sure.
Okay, Trustee Lightyear, oh, yeah.
Discussion, discussion. So, there was a time, maybe six months ago, where we talked about putting some financials online.
Yes, there.
Is it online right now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. If you could, where do I go to find?
If you go into reports, applications and forums, you go into financial.
Financial.
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful. December, so then January posting, and these are posted.
I think you guys wanted them on quarterly, but if you want them on monthly.
Quarterly sounds great, I think.
I can do it on the monthly.
Yeah, I think quarterly is what we had talked about. I think that's good. So, the December's out there, and then we'll do March when they come in. Thank you.
And then, anything else with the financials themselves?
Yeah, we're good. Okay, roll call.
Okay, Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, and on the budget transfers?
Yeah, I just had one question about the sewer fund transfers. I was wondering why the copies cost more in this period than they usually do?
The copies, this was related to something directly that was.
Sewer bills?
With the sewer bills.
So, the sewer bills had gone out?
Yeah, there was an issue with the sewer bills. There were some copies that needed to be made. It was a cost of having the bills themselves printed.
This wasn't an unexpected cost related to adding material about the roughed districts to the sewer bill, was it?
No, it is not. This is directly getting the sewer bills printed at a local printer. We had, had sewer bills to send out. In the past, this was actually covered in general, which it shouldn't have been, so we put it to the appropriate line.
Motion?
Motion, the board, to approve general and sewer transfers?
So, okay, is there a second, please? You have a second? Roll call.
Okay, Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Okay, real quick, I have a coffee and conversation that we're looking to schedule for April 20th. This is with the village historian, with De Prophet. It would be on April 20th, between 9:30 and 11:00, and she would discuss all things history of the village.
And history of the village.
With the residents. So, can I have approval of that? Because that is something the board wanted.
Yeah.
Is anybody else, just attend, I'm looking on vacation.
Maybe.
Anybody else?
Say the date again for people.
April 20th.
It's Saturday. It's a Saturday.
April 20th.
9:30 and 11:00.
I think it'd be great, because she's, she's a new historian, too.
I would have been there.
You know, because Audrey Johnson is retired, so this is an opportunity, I think, for our residents to kind of meet the new historian and talk about what's available, you know? Will there be a focus to, to her presentation? Yes. She, she said, she's putting something together, I know that. She wanted to talk about what it means to be in an historic district. Okay. You know, I think we're going to try to make blue sheets available for people to see the history of their houses if they'd like, you know, things like that. So, and she can, she's also going to talk about the resources that she can bring to bear for, you know, to the village, and also let people know where our office is. Yes, you know, so.
I'd like to extend a special limitation to our HPB members.
P R O.
For the trustees, to be there, to be present, because I think would be.
Yeah, we can invite.
It's an opportunity for them.
Yeah, we do have them definitely know that it's.
Okay, great.
And it's going to be a bill child, what time?
January to 11:00.
So, make it to the calendar, too?
Yep, it'll be on the calendar. We'll send out a post.
Yeah, it'll be posted.
We'll advertise it appropriately, but, so you give me the authorization.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Okay. Oh, it's, oh, we're almost to six o'clock, and I'm quite. And I don't believe, except Todd House isn't here.
I have people online I can identify, so, yes, Dr. Fox is online, I should, the razor hand, that'd be great. Anyone skip her for it now?
Yeah, I guess, somebody coming in? Um, yeah, I guess so, because, I mean, she has to be on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. I do know it was about, um, she, she's, and it's going to be hosted here at Village Hall, and I cannot remember the date. It's in April, it is.
April eighteenth.
Yeah, she wanted to, to let the board know, April eighteenth, it's an evening discussion with, uh, a, a very well-known authority on removal, there it is, Tom Bebekhauser.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, he wants to talk about the removal of, um, aquatic invasives from, of the wetlands that are, um, in the arboretum, so, and I think also he's going to be working with the town, you know, as well. So, I think that's really, I think that's what she wanted to cover.
Yep, she had three dates on here, the presentation at the Village Hall, the actual walk through the arboretum on the nineteenth, and April twenty-eighth, it saved the dog, saved the, saved the frogs day at Fifty Mitchell Road, it's her. So, that's all in our back end, anybody?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll be doing places, but I, I think that's really, really what she, she wanted to cover. Um, okay, it's six.
Sixty seconds.
Just about.
I know, it's so close.
We're good.
Now, we hit us, can you?
Because, you just made it back.
I know.
How did that happen? Were we in a hurry like that?
Could be, we were a second, seven minutes.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, so, um, okay, it's six.
It's six on my phone.
It's on your phone?
Yeah.
Six on my iPad, okay. It's a time certain for a public hearing. Um, you know, I, I think I'd, I'd like to go with the fire department, because I know you're, so, you know, just going to switch you with Fifty Seven Monroe, tell them, and just because our emergency responders are here, and there could be an emergency at any minute, so.
The majority of you are out on the water.
Oh, there we go, okay. Um, so, this is the local law for the exemption of volunteer fire and ambulance workers, and we had passed, um, a, a version of the law last year, um, and we're happy to do so. And then this is really, um, now it's statewide, and so this is really, um, an amendment essentially to the existing law, so it's, I guess, in line with the state requirements. Um, and I believe you all have the paperwork on that, and I think it's a good thing, so. Is there any discussion from the board? Ever make that motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this particular item? Yes.
Coming, nineteen O Street, also the president of the, your party, over here. Um, we appreciate the positive vote from the board, and, uh, we thank you very much. Um, as of today, I need your seven members who live in the village to qualify for that, uh, reduction.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thanks for all your good work. Anybody online wishing to chime in?
We have a call.
Okay, crickets. All righty, uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the hearing is closed, as captain of the board, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the language in front of me. I will make a motion that we, um, accept the amendment to our.
Local law.
Original local law, including, okay. Here, here, it's the large, yeah, for the exemption, okay. To, uh, include the exemption of volunteer fire and ambulance workers and spouses. Isn't that retired also? That was the extension that was being offered. Yes. So, that it would include also spouses.
Spas, spouses.
Surviving spouses.
Surviving spouses.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next up, the special permit for Fifty Seven Monroe Avenue? Hello. Hello, want to grab a chair there? How are you?
I'm good, how are you all?
Good, welcome.
You too.
Hi, there.
How are you, yeah?
Good.
Just to do our type of point to represent and include you, you know, Fifty Seven Monroe Avenue, that they're answering questions of. May you remain to him. At the last meeting, we had proposed, at least physically, the seven, the seven-year redevelopment of the project, Fifty Seven, of the plan. The time was somewhat vague, you know, what the intent was with building itself.
Okay.
So, the current plan is to not basically modify the existing building windows and doors, so we are, the unit's configuration will respect that, so that there won't be physically any changes.
So, really, it's interior remodeling.
That's correct.
That's what my takeaway was when I was looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, the, and also to make use of the existing covered terraces that basically surround the building. So, again, the, um, the units will enter from the parking lot side, but will still have access, the lower units will still have access to that, um, covered area on the Monroe Avenue side. Basically, those areas will just be used as seating areas only. Uh, there's, um, plan for picnic area, or that, any improvements from the standpoint of a tenant identity, like picnic area, will be on the parking lot side, uh, not, not the streets side, the.
I think the tenants would like that, too, anyway, lighter, you know.
Yeah, right. The, um, plus, that's the, from sun exposure side. Uh, there, there's two sidewalks, one that connects, um, to, directly to Monroe Avenue from the center of the building, and then there's that side, sidewalk that sort of accesses, uh, the drive area. The plan would not be to utilize any of the parking on the adjacent property, so the available parking exceeds what would be the required parking for, there's currently twenty-two spaces, um, which only might require based on what.
Yeah, Lily, I have a question, question. What about signage? Are you going to have a sign identifying this? Is the building going to have a, a name, or is it just going to be blending in residentially with?
We were going to call it Pittsburgh Luxury Apartments, but I didn't, you know, I didn't put in a sign yet. I mean, I could put a sign up, but I wasn't going to.
There's a sign already going in for Village Grove, green. Yes, it's on a, a, I don't know whether you were thinking about adding it to that, or? I didn't know, I didn't know what you planned.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to put some type of signage, but I didn't really think about it yet, where it would go yet. If there's a space available in that, in that one area, I would definitely use it.
Okay, so, as, as, sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but there's a sidewalk that goes from, uh, the public sidewalk on Monroe.
Yeah.
Straight towards the building, and then there's an additional sidewalk.
Right here.
Along the driveway. Okay.
So, it looks like you have, um, in the plan, it looks like you did take away some parking space and you added some landscape areas?
Yeah, so, the plan would be future, uh, future revisions to that area, which would mitigate the, I mean, the use of the not, or, uh, the non-apartment.
So, it would just add some green space, that way?
So that there would be a buffer between.
Parking.
Those units, parking, and then sit around that level, so that, so that, um, it would more reflect what sort of the, um, to the, to the west. The building to the west sort of has more of a buffer on that side of the building, towards the parking, than the rest, the parking is basically right up against the building. So, there is, um, future discussion about utilizing some of that space to help not have parking, cars pulling in with their headlights.
Going out of the building, yeah, that makes sense.
That's true, because it's different, it was a commercial use, and so that wouldn't have mattered as much, but when you're living there.
Right, and I think part of that, too, is for the name, the, the plan for a luxury level apartment, that, that's, sort of, uh, thing, something to, that, down the road, could be that.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Any, any other comments? Justin? Did you?
Um, yeah, I, I guess, my, everything here looks, looks really good, and I, I think, um, I can really see the area benefiting from the, uh, the residential, um, uh, plan that you're, that you're putting in front of us. I guess, I would still like to see a little bit more clarity about the plans, and specifically, I, I notice in, in the back here, when looking at the, the diagrams, you know, as, as you mentioned, the removal of some parking spaces for the buffering, which seems to me like a, a really good idea. Um, but just seeing, uh, a, a plan about how that would be done, as well as the proposed screened picnic area, um, that I have on the, uh, the diagram here, um, it seems like those are the, the ma, you know, the major or minor, whatever, some kinds of changes to the, um, the back of the area. Um, and I understand from our, our building inspector, the, um, site plan is not required, but I wonder if he wanted to, to speak to that for a moment.
Is that something you're doing right away? Is, or is this?
Well, we're, I want to get, get it completed first, and then, uh.
And come, and then come back with a.
Yeah, and then come back.
The landscape.
Commending the site plan and taking a, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to get to the actual project.
That wasn't my understanding, it was in.
Yeah.
And they are, they are not required to do with site plan for interior amount of the space, based on the code.
And that's what's before us now.
Right.
Is the, just so we're, we're, we're clear at this point, and the discussion, you know, what you're bringing up is something that you're thinking about in the future, then you, they would come back and go through the process.
After the project opens, then, so it's not.
Yeah.
The initial stage.
So, that's kind of like a phase two, getting rid of the parking spaces and adding the landscape?
Yeah, because there's, there's the process associated with it, you know, with site, you know, level one, finalizing it, the concept, site plan review, whether, uh, the improvements would have, I guess, need for review beyond that, but that's something that the plan would be to bring that back to this board to review it as part of.
But right now, what's on the agenda is the interior.
Interior only.
Only, okay.
No, no changes.
I just want to make sure the public understands that as well.
Outside of all.
Okay, okay. Is there anything that the board would need to be aware of as far as, um, upgrade of services, like the sewer, or storage, or anything like that, what they've increased in bathrooms, or anything like that? Would the, in, use, interior use is more intense in any way?
There's no, no increase of causing change in electrical service or plumbing service in the building.
Okay.
They're increasing the building by two bathrooms only, not enough to create any change or necessity. I've walked the site, I mean, like I say, you have access completely around the building, to the sidewalk. Um, it has more than enough green space, it has an enclosed dumpster area. I mean, it's purely an application right now for an interior renovation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they do know, you know, we've discussed several times, down the road, when they want to do some changes, or, you know, when they can afford to do some changes to the exterior, he will have to come before the planning board to get approval for site plan.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you got, okay, anybody else, any other?
I was gonna let Justin go, but then. Well, I guess, you know, to me, I, I understand, uh, perhaps needing to, to wait until the project is motioned to do some of these kinds of things. I guess, I would like to see, you know, if, if this is on the plans in front of us as a, a concept for the future that you're thinking about doing, I would rather have it all upfront, so that we can consider it, and, and then it could be done in stages later. Um, I think that's important for our consideration, as well as for, for possible things.
I think it's a function of what the applicant is willing to do going forward. I mean, we can't drive the process for a develop, what, what you choose to do in terms of, it's your private property, and this is what's before us now, that's my understanding. I, I hear where you're going, it'd be nice to, you know, but, uh, the vocal for us, and the agenda item for us, it doesn't include that, they're just putting it out there for the board, you know, in, in the future.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, Lily.
I was, I was wondering if the board would like to go through this, the criteria, with the applicant present, or do we want to do that as part of deliberation?
Well, we have a public hearing, too.
Right.
To have, to go through.
Yeah, we have a public hearing. Yeah.
All right, so that you're, you're aware of the criteria that we're considering, and.
You've gone, you've gone over. Pardon me?
You didn't open the public.
No, I know, we haven't opened it yet. This is, the board is discussing, and then we're going to open the public hearing, and then we'll bring it, close it and bring it back to the board, or leave it open if it needs to be, you know, whatever the outcome is of that. Um, so, you've reviewed, though, the criteria with the applicant, so you, you're.
They need the criteria under the code for this.
Yeah.
This, it's a unique animal for the village.
Yeah, it is.
The fact that this is under a special permit is something the board's never seen, or village's never seen. We're, we're upon a criteria, and they, they have met everything under the code.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that I mean, so, the, the code is useful, for sure. You also have major planning documents, like the comprehensive plan, um, and the granting of special permits isn't just necessarily does it fit within the code, it's how does it fit within the overall schematic of the village and what we want to accomplish overall, right? So, the code is there as a guiding point, once you've hit those criteria, but the special permit gives us the ability to kind of look into those documents and look into other things, and say, how does this, how does this opportunity for you and for us come together in a way that's great for everybody? Right? Um, so, I'm just going to read something, uh, from the comprehensive plan, and this is, uh, specific to the network of walkable, connected neighborhoods and streets. And I want to put this in the context of, this is a mixed-use, um, zone, but it is contiguous with a residential zone, and is the very next property to that residential zone on the main entrance and thoroughfare, really, coming, an artery coming into the village. So, it's a very, uh, premier property, uh, which is outstanding. Um, so, the village, this is from the comprehensive plan. The village's traditional development pattern, historic architecture, neighborhoods, streetlines, uh, streets, combined with our sidewalk network, access to transit, the rear canal, are the foundation of our inviting act of street skirts. And it goes on with some other things, but that's actually the, the heading of the neighborhoods, right? Neighborhood of walkable, connected streets. So, as of now, from the planned perspective, all access is from the rear rather than the front. So, one of my concerns is, and this has to do with the, um, document presented as well, A-one dot zero zero, none of the windows on this match up with the windows on the building, nor do the doors actually have any utility, they're all somewhere around the bedroom, I think. So, my, one of my concerns, anyway, is we've got a building with three front facades, a sidewalk going up to it, sidewalks on the front, doors on either side, so there's three primary doors that are accessible from the sidewalk. So, one of the challenges to activating that front facade of that building, rather than just simply being a rear access parking lot into a luxury apartment, is, how do you do that within the interior? So, I'm a hundred percent in favor of looking at a special permit and granting one for, uh, multifamily dwelling, right, uh, residents, but I would really like to engage the comprehensive plan to help us better figure out, how can we also open that up to be a part of that residential district moving forward? And what I see right now, again, I know you've mentioned there's no change to the exterior of the building, but everywhere where these windows.
The plan, well, the, the plan that's shown.
Yeah.
Is with the intent of showing, within the code, that the storage department, giving you an idea of the size of the unit.
Okay.
We have not done, the, the plan is evolving.
Okay.
What I, what I'm submitting for record is the fact that there is no plan, and it's from owner-directed to maintain the doors and windows as they currently, part of it is at the, uh, primarily for cost, but also, you know, just generally speaking, with the building as it lays out, that, that those doors, as they're located, will be utilized with future revision to the unit plans. Now, when we're talking about engaging the street, the, the, we're not saying that those doors are not going to be, you know, that the units aren't going to be using those doors and engage to the road. What I think we're talking about is the idea that those are going to become front doors, and from a, from a, from a building owner's standpoint, and from a renter's point of view, you know, that you're going to want to get into your building from where your parking is.
Yes.
And if the building lays itself out to that condition, the thing that we have at the building now is that those terrace levels, all that front area, is connected to a sidewalk that connects to Monroe Avenue.
Yeah.
That affords the opportunity for, for people that are renters to be able to use that access point to be able to use that access point to, if they want to go out for a walk, if they want to go down to the canal, like that, that exists from, from. What we're, what we're talking about is front door, back door. The unit plans and an efficient layout will provide, you know, a tenant's ability to come into the front of the back.
I'm going to jump in on this real quick because I have a question for the board. Raise your hand if you get out of your car and you go around to the front door of your house to walk in. Nope. You use your entrance door from where you park your car or your garage is, you know. So I think what you're saying is this is kind of really how we all live. And so we have our front doors that we may not use. There's front doors there that may or may not be used, but they create that presence of a doorway on the streetscape, just as yours does or, you know. I mean, I just, just as a practical matter, I just think that's really how people live. I appreciate what you're saying, but I think it's addressed.
I'm trying to misunderstand what I'm saying.
Okay.
So I have no problem with rear entrance and the rear design. My challenge is I'm looking at a document in front of me to grant a special permit, right? With what I would consider to be not an accurate understanding of how that would engage. So the question, obviously, it's a, you have work to do to incorporate it to where those are accessible and usable and bring them forward. And there's the question, well, I want to put in the costs to get that work done when I don't know if I'm going to get the special permit perhaps, right? I don't know how, and so this is a cart before the horse sort of thing.
I'm not sure where this is going, throw me out.
So the special permit, right? The permitting process is there for a reason, right? It's there to say, is this something we want? And are there conditions to it that we want to add as part of that permitting process?
That's why it's special.
Right. So what I'm saying is right now, I don't have enough confidence to do that without adding some sort of condition to the permit that requires the adaptation of the outside forms, perhaps to trustee Lightkip's comments or to the front door accessibility and subsequent, I don't know if you could do it on a subsequent review, but you'd have to have utilization and accessibility through the front doors to the public streetscape. And again, this document is just straight windows across the front facade. And I know you're saying you're going to keep them and you're going to put in the accessibility. But for me, the permit, I think, is somewhat contingent upon that.
Well, then, I guess, from the standpoint of the process and what we're at.
Yeah.
The, the board approving the permit with contingencies would be understood if that is the board's desire to protect the interest of what we're discussing here.
Yeah.
There are certain things that at my point of view on the architecture end, that we have to, you know, you have to get in to the building. Like I can provide you a document and say, okay, this is the layout. But until we get in there and start doing demolition and start doing things to uncover some of the stuff that, not having pre-existing documents, that some of what we might find might very well impact what we do put on paper. So I think the idea is not to provide a document that necessarily, I mean, to provide a document that would solve this question of the using of the doors is certainly easy enough to do. But in reality, there is, to do it faithfully from the standpoint of providing a document, you'd need to do effort and that effort can't really take place without someone at least giving a conditional okay to move forward with it. So we, we can do our, you know, interim bit work to know that, yes, the wall's coming down and then we find out we can't take it down. Or that there are certain things structurally that would impact the layout. But I think what, what we've been working with is basically the promise that the intent is to not change the exterior of the building. That's.
Into utilize.
That has been firmly said.
Right, so that, and that's, that, that being a condition of approval, I mean, even, you know, from a site standpoint, coming back with that when that process comes is all something that I know, having talked to Michael, that, you know, that that, you know, giving him the idea that some of this might be a condition of approval and we would have to provide it to either through the building department to, I guess, satisfy some of what it is.
Well, we have to go back to the proper boards depending on what is going to happen. But we do have a public hearing scheduled and we can always bring this back to the board. So I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkip.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anybody on line?
Yes.
Any? Thank.
I think so, yeah.
Quickest. Okay. All right, is there?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, please.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkip.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion to pass this.
Okay, so it's back to the board.
I would like to, to Lily's point, review the conditions. That's all right.
Sure.
Lily, do you want to do that?
Want to go through the conditions?
Okay. So it goes A, B, C, D, E, F. And the criteria by which we are determining the approval of a special use for conversion to residential in an MU OFC district are a conformance with the Pittsford Village Comprehensive Plan and Town and Village Local Waterfront Revivalization Program, which is not applicable in this case. It is not.
No, it's not.
Within the LWRP. So what the board is considering with the first criteria is the conformance with the Pittsford Village Comprehensive Plan. And I will begin by saying, I do believe what the access, pedestrian access is demonstrated in what we've been shown in the plan, that that does fulfill that requirement. The second is, as part of our village comprehensive plan, we are to identify and help foster additional housing options in the village of Pittsford. And I think that fits that criteria as well.
Actually, it's needed because so many people want to downsize.
Exactly.
You know, they want to stay in our village, so.
And it's a green use also. And we are climate smart community and so that also falls under that criteria as well.
Any other?
I'll make your best发言.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? I'm actually in agreement with, with everything that you, you know, described and I think it's a great adaptive reuse project. And I think it really, I think it sort of puts forth, you know, it is kind of new for us to do this, but I think it kind of, you know, I appreciate the initiative and the fact that it sort of puts forth best practices, you know, because when you demolish a building and put it in a landfill, not that this would happen, but, you know, in other instances, I can tell you there was a huge campaign many years ago from the National Trust of Historic Preservation, the greenest buildings are the ones already built.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's what adaptive reuse is all about, so. And again, I agree, I think it definitely meets a need in our community. I appreciate your efforts as well. Any other comments from the board?
This, I think you might have mentioned a little bit, I'll just repeat. Obviously, the housing options, but there is a note that says, "Expanding types of residential and commercial use is permitted in mixed-use areas to provide a greater variety of amenities to residents." But, you know, I think this is a unique residential opportunity on what is generally a main artery and a unique property in the village that I think livens it up in terms of people coming and going and, you know, from downtown. So, yeah.
That's a good point because it does activate the building really in a different way.
Yeah.
It has a different type of energy. In other words, the fact that it's sort of, you know, an office building during the day and then it closes at night.
Right, right.
You know, now you really have sort of a little bit more, you know, that dynamic of village life, which I think is great, so. Any other, any other comments from the board or is there a motion?
I'd like to. Are we going to go through B?
Oh, B, we have to go through B, you're right. Oh, and here comes our attorney, perfect timing. We're moving along. We're moving along. We're supposed to be.
B, conformance with the district building use and lot requirements of this chapter. I believe the building inspector has reviewed all of those elements and so, and found that they meet all that criteria. C, conformance with all applicable regulations for certain uses as provided by Article 24 of this chapter. And I think that the board has reviewed that section as well. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I believe that you talked about that. And so I have no problem with the board, if the whole board, if everyone agrees with that.
Yeah.
Okay, D was the adequacy of the off-street parking access and trash management. The applicant has addressed both of those issues and I think, I am satisfied with the response. And I think the board is as well. And then F is compatibility of the proposed use with the adjacent properties, uses and structures that define by the potential of the specially permitted use.
And Lily, do you want to?
Oh, as a landscaping and screening. Yeah, screening, yeah. I missed that.
It's in the back, yeah.
Oh, I see, E, adequacy of landscaping and screening. According to the, although it's not an official site plan, according to the application, it has been demonstrated that asphalt will be removed from the site and replaced with green space and landscaping, which is also in conformance with the village's stress on, on having green spaces added to our, our living environment in our, in our village. Also, the accessibility for the, for the residents of the building to enjoy the outside spaces. Those spaces will be provided, so now it becomes a more welcoming building. We welcome the exterior because we have hopefully people sitting outside and enjoying their outside patios and a livelihood that doesn't exist with an office building.
If I could comment just on the landscaping and screening. This is just more for conversation than an opinion I should probably hold. Right now, there is landscaping between the adjacent residential property and your property. It is a higher density use than a single-family home. And to what degree are those, that landscaping, is that currently yours or is that the, on the neighbor's lawn?
That's ours.
So that landscaping, that hedgerow that's kind of growing up, that is on your property lawn?
Yeah. And I have a subject that we would come.
Are you planning to maintain the hedgerow?
Oh, yeah.
At this time?
Yeah, you are, yes.
And Steve, is there a height requirement on hedgerows between properties? Or a limit for any of that?
I mean, the hedgerow is there as well, because they're required height. And they've got a garage and a full, you know, full salad fast there.
So I guess my question is, if a permit is granted contingent upon maintaining a hedgerow and screening buffer, vegetation buffer of six feet or greater along the existing line, is that anything of concern to you?
Oh, no, I would take that.
It is in the code, everyone would have to maintain.
Maintain by code.
By code, yeah.
By code. Yeah. Related to, so we're talking about landscaping and screening. And again, to my earlier comments, I think trustee Lanfair, you mentioned that part of this plan is to remove parking spots and add more green space. And I just wanted to mention that I think that reviewing some of those matters is, goes beyond the scope of what this board usually does. But I do believe those are things that require site plans. So, you know, I guess that's the conundrum for me on this, that we're kind of basing our assumptions about some of this on something that is not under review by this board. Steve, do you want to comment to that?
Yeah, Lily may have said that, but if you listen to the applicant, the application before, he was not for any external changes right now. They, Lily brought it in, but that's not what these gentlemen are asking you for right now. They are not asking you for a change in any parking area at this moment. The only thing they're asking this board for is a special permit to convert the interior of that building to apartments. Down the road, if financials present themselves to be able to do that, they would come back to the planning board for site plan approval to change the landscaping as required by code.
Can I kind of make a comment? I just wanted to say, I did walk the site and I think the applicants have been very, very agreeable in trying to make this, this place very homy. I mean, this applicant renovated that house across the street, put in the porch. He's very much committed to a village experience. So when I did walk the site, I explained to him how much I loved the outside space and the covered spaces and how great it would look to have a bunch of rocking chairs out there for people. And, and they went over and above and put down that, to verify that they are going to use that outside space. And then also, I think they went over and above to, to help us understand that they are trying to make it more homy, more green space, even though that's not part of the application tonight. They just kind of out of courtesy wanted us to know that they are trying to make it more homy and more village.
Yeah, and frankly, you've already invested in our village and we know, as you say, the kind of, you know, work you do. Like you put a porch back on a house that had the porch removed decades ago and returned that to our streetscape.
So there's an.
Yeah, so, but again, you know, it's the interior that's not confirmed this evening. Yes.
Actually, Mr. Clejo has done two projects in the village and both of them have been high-quality improvements to our community.
And just real quick on the existing condition with respect to landscaping, this particular building density on this site is nearly, almost half of it is green space, which is what we unheard of for a project of this scale, trying to maximize return on investment, basically. So the nice thing about having adaptive reuse of this particular structure, it has built into it amenities that would be what the comprehensive plan is trying to promote with new development. So it sits onsite landscaped grass area.
Agreed.
It's low density, it's, it's everything that, from a, from a standpoint, it's like already made from, and then, so, and, I mean, part of, our discussion was trying to keep people informed, at least about the intent. And that's my guess. Places to try to know that there is a longer-term plan than just converting it and collecting where.
Just, just to clarify for the community, that we are not doing anything with the outside landscaping. We're not doing any approvals. That tonight is strictly on the renovation of the interior of that structure and significant change from the outside.
Although, I would add that the board has, within its purview, to do something with landscaping and screening should so wish within the parameters of the special use permit.
So you mean we can.
Well, we can make, we can make conditions.
Be required.
Yeah. We can make conditions.
Adequacy of landscaping and screening as long as we consider issues under special permission.
So on, on that same point, I did just hear that there was a matter brought in front of the planning board relating to a surrounding property where some of the adequacy of the existing fence was called into question, the maintenance of the existing fence. Maybe, Steve, you could clarify, if there is an issue with a fence almost disrepair, it would be incumbent on whoever owns that fence to bring it up to code, right?
The fence that's on five Sullivan, they repaired that fence.
Okay, so that's no longer an issue with.
No.
Please address.
But the fence that's surrounding Pittsford Village Green, which is not their property, is part of the site plan, so that's, that could be enforced if it was a living.
And Jeff, since you're here, just one other question. So we're, we're talking about possibly doing some other changes in the future. Any implications on that as far as seeker is concerned?
No, this is a type two seeker.
Okay, so there's no concern about possible segmentation with.
No, it's type two, and that is. Six seventeen point five, so paragraph C, so paragraph eighteen.
Okay, would we need a seeker designation before we move on?
Definitely. Clearance to be a type two.
Clearance to be a.
Yeah, for declaration. Any other comments from the board?
So we're just on landscaping right now. So just to come back, Lily, to your earlier comments, the landscaping that's proposed would not be part of the special permit unless we were to make it so.
No, but I think what the, what's listed in the criteria is that it fit a certain, that it was a part of that, our approval process in that, that it provides for at least a minimum of landscaping that we have in our code. So we have to, we were acknowledging that, yes, they have the landscaping and that because that's something that we have to consider in granting them a special use permit.
So the question I'm asking is, what is there now? Is that, is that adequate?
According to our code, I believe it is.
So then.
And like, Steve.
Yeah, why is there? Yeah. Why is her adequate by the code?
But it's also, it's adequate relative to the special permit, which is what we get to make the judgment call on. So to the comment of, are you approving the special permit for the multi-use dwelling? Do you find that the existing landscaping, which is adequate to code, but is it adequate for this use? Is the question.
Chad, do please weigh in. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the reason it's especially permitted use is for this area reason. Maybe it's not a reason, but so that if the board felt like it was a particularly sensitive area, that the board wanted more screening, the board is entitled to do something about those issues, whether, you know, it's screening or whether it's, you know, when people dump their bottles from a bar or whatever, you're entitled to make those conditions part of the special permit.
So to that end, is the existing dumpster screened with landscaping or with hardwood fencing? How is that screened?
Fencing.
Hardware fencing.
Fencing.
Which means required under the code.
Which means required under the code.
And there is some, there is landscaping. There is growth. There are small trees around that whole area between the neighborhood property. So it's not just?
The landscaping is on the side that faces the residence.
Yeah.
If I remember. I'd walk into, but I'm trying to remember.
Is it possible, members of the board, I suppose, that we, as a residential use rather than a commercial use, want heightened screening for dumpsters in a multi-family like this? And it may just be planted trees that might grow up around the fencing that exists now? Or are we just asking questions for debate? Not yet that I have an opinion strongly.
How high is the fencing?
Under the code for planted screening versus the what is existing.
I understand that. But the code is, the code is important, but the special permit is uniquely different. Where we can pull the code tighter if we wanted to, or have it even be different as part of the special permit.
Yeah. This board can put conditions on it. So, but how high is the fencing around the dumpster now? It's like six feet, right? And how is the dumpster? And then there's plantings on the other side.
And trees.
Yeah. Because the dumpster is actually in the corner of the parking lot.
Yeah. It's in the back corner.
Right. Yeah.
Does it have, does it have a front screening?
It's fully enclosed inside.
It's fully enclosed?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just putting that out there for the board. I personally, for the additional landscaping in the back for luxury apartments, you're going to probably move in that direction anyway. And it's behind the general public purview that if that backside landscaping doesn't occur, for me anyway, I still like it and moving forward with the multi-family approvals for the special permit. But on the, and I know we'll keep going through this during the second with F and G, but as far as the comprehensive, I'm just going to back up to A, which is conform to the comprehensive plan. For me, I'd like to have a requirement to have front door accessibility and utility of those doors and no change in the existing, you know, windows. Should something not be able to be done and the special permit is granted, you'd have to come back to get an occupancy memo.
To amend it?
To amend it.
Yeah.
If there's something that is tragic and you're unable to?
I don't foresee that.
Right. That's what I'm hoping to, right?
Right.
But it's nice and simple. Okay.
I think the board, we have to answer the questions under F, one through 10.
One roll.
Okay. Compatibility of the proposed use with adjacent properties, uses and structures. And it begins with one, will this use create a hazard to the public health, safety and general welfare or create a public nuisance? So the board needs to answer that question. No? Okay. That was resounding. Second. Will the proposed use alter the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the residents thereof through the production of noxious or objectionable noise, dust, glare, odor, refuse, fumes, vibrations, unsightliness, contamination or other similar conditions?
No.
No. Vibrations. That's interesting. I think good vibrations. Okay. We will circle that. I have one question about that, number second. And that is the outside lighting, security lighting, I assume you may want more than exists presently. So that might be something that we'd want to talk about. I don't know. Is it residential, outside of each entry, there has to be a light, right? By the door, whatever, entry, but that's?
Right. That would be under the purview of the local and under residential district or so.
Okay. It would be just that.
That's something that I would review. If they put a picture up, that would have to be under the purview of the historic preservation board.
Okay. Number three is cause significant traffic congestion, create a traffic hazard or vehicular or pedestrian hazard.
Just a brief comment there. Right now, there is no sidewalk on the exit. So many of the units will have an exit through the back, not through the front, you know, top floor units or whatever. They come out through the back, but they want to walk down to the village. How do they get from the back parking lot as a pedestrian to the sidewalk excluding the, will you have? So if I look to the side of the building, you had indicated that as, I think as seating areas.
There's a slave walkway around the right side of the building. They came from the back to the front, or to the front side.
That front side.
So there is now, but it's noted as seating areas, existing covered patio area with ground floor unit access. So the question to the owner is whether or not that's going to be unit access or facility or the entire dwelling.
Of course, the facility because there are a lot of people that are given that down the sidewalk right to the?
So it sounds like many of the things that I'm presenting, you've already thought of, which is outstanding, which also means that you're perfectly fine with that being a condition of the permit because you already planned to do it.
Yeah. No problem.
Great.
Great. Four, cause undue harm or to destroy existing sensitive natural features on the site or the surrounding area. No. Okay. Impact historic properties. Fail to provide adequate parking to support the proposed use without causing a parking shortage or other problems for nearby businesses and or residents, no per se contained. With the proposed use fail to provide a location and or property that has room to accommodate refuse in accordance with their village code requirement that will not pose a nuisance for neighbors.
How many dumpsters will you need for that many residents?
You know, I have a nine-unit right now and I have a four-ton and it's, it's always usually half empty.
So it's a single, a single smaller dumpster?
Yeah.
But this is the same size there.
Yeah. This is actually small, right? That's a nine unit. So that should be a four-ton, a small.
Will not be adequately served by existing and or proposed water and sanitary sewer systems and other public facilities and surface services such as sufficient roadway capacity, police and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal and schools. I don't think eight units are going to, no?
Suppose seven.
Seven. Okay. No. Nine, create a public nuisance for the purpose of this subsection. The term public nuisance shall mean noise, light, traffic and or odors, which, under the time, place and manner which they occur, when annoy, disturb, injure or endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace or safety of a reasonable person of normal sensitivities. I think the way they covered just about every?
I know. Especially repose. You really want that in there.
Use case.
Oh, is it? Oh, that's interesting. Yeah. It's pretty thorough. And number 10, otherwise result in an excessive or significant negative impact on the community of the reviewing, in the opinion of the reviewing board, may have an impact on the public health, safety and general welfare of the community. And so that is, that is our charge as trustees and our biggest consideration, I believe. So. And what do you think? Negative impact?
No.
No. I believe it would be a positive impact. I believe this is a direction that as a village, we are hoping to move. And I hope it's just the beginning of other, I mean, used office spaces being converted to mixed use so that we can have a both residential and office uses even in one setting or in one building. And when you think about it, really, just take a look at Main Street. For the most part, unless there's churches, the Thursdays, all the other buildings are adaptively reused. They're just rebuilt in 1800. You know, yeah. We're talking adaptive reuse. That's our mantra.
Yeah.
Okay. What else? Yes, Steve?
No, I just wanted to mention that in terms of the issues these discuss that are in front of us tonight, I believe the project has many positive aspects. I think the impact on historic properties, which is F5, is actually a positive on, since it helps to reuse the existing space. I think that overall, the net impact on the community will be very positive and I support that. The only issue that I wanted to bring up, I think is really not solely for the applicant, but for the village to improve on, I feel like a lot of the questions that we've dealt with here are really better addressed by the planning board in terms of the site plan, which I believe that that process is designed for. So my own reading of the code is different than some others. And I would have actually gone down that process and had that done. Then I think our job would have actually been easier. So anyway, that's just my personal thing and it does not detract my support from my vote to be in favor of approving the special use permit as discussed tonight.
Any other comments from the board before someone makes a motion?
I'm going to try to make a?
I see you writing, so I figured you were on it.
Yeah. All right. So just to throw out the three things or four things that I would like to see, whether or not it's embedded in the code, I'd like to have it specific to the special permit. Those four things, I think, like what we've agreed to and you in fact want to do. So I don't think they're going to be of concern, but the first one was contingent upon front door accessibility and utility to the Monroe Avenue sidewalks of the existing doors. Right? The second one?
Trustee Marshall, is this in the nature of the motion?
No, it's?
Okay. Clarification.
Clarification. You can put it in a motion.
And then I can put it in a motion and everybody can either vote it down to put one through. It doesn't have these things, you know. The second one was no change to the windows or doors visible to the public right of way. So what we see is what we get, kind of thing. Right? Introducing the utility in the prior edition. Full screenage of existing or of four refuges. So comfortable with that being, you know, wood rather than greenage. And then the other one was a fully walkable paved or sidewalk path from the parking, back parking to the sidewalk on Monroe.
Yeah. Creating the full access.
Full access. So somebody walks out the back of their place, they can get to the front. All right. One final thought. We are trying to encourage bikeability. What are your plans for bicyclist access? Will you have, obviously not outdoors, or a basement? Are you going to have basement storage? Is this just strictly unit-specific storage? If somebody wanted to have a bike, is that just not available to them?
Well, I didn't think about that, but I mean, there's overheads around here. I mean, we could figure a spot, maybe a bike or something.
A little bike rack.
Bike rack.
Yeah. I'll leave that alone, but if it is something?
Well, if they, if they tend to round it up with a rail, there's no problem.
So, all right. Well, is any other conditions or thoughts? No? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as discussed with the four conditions. The first one being the front door accessibility and utility for the, to the Monroe Avenue sidewalks for those three front doors. No change to the windows or doors in the public right of way, invisible to the public right of way. Full screenage for the refuse and a fully walkable paved or sidewalk path from the back parking to the sidewalk on Monroe for all residents.
I second. Okay. We have a motion. A second. Roll call, please. Okay. Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passed. Wow. Something new for the village.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Now, thanks for working with us.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with us.
Why don't I have a piece of it?
All right. Have a great evening. All righty. Why don't we do South and Wood, the GPI presentation? Yeah. What? Pardon me? Yeah. I know, Margo, we had started our meetings.
Yeah. I started at 6:30.
I know.
I'm a lawyer, so.
I know. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. If we can just have our friends from GPI come up. Appreciate that. We need a minute. Oh, yeah. You know what? Should we just do a five-minute adjournment?
Yes.
Can you give me a few minutes?
So we can move.
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to need to kind of redo. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn for, what, what do you need? Five minutes?
Please.
Five minutes? Is there a second? Okay. Roll call. Trustee Marshall?
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea? Aye. Trustee Whitehead?
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Okay. Pause, please.
Okay. Thanks for everybody for the information. We have a few technical difficulties. We're back online here and we are glad to have GPI with us this evening. They're going to give us an update, a presentation about the project for South and Wood Street.
Thank you. So my name is Caitlin Hennes. I'm the project manager from GPI for this project. And I have with me today Clay Young and he's our project engineer that's going to be designing. We come to you after having met previously at a meeting for the Wood Street section where we met and we talked about different school sections and you guys approved one that you wanted to do. And that meeting, there was a request from the audience and from the board to look at traffic calming measures for South Street and to see how we could get incorporated into this project. So tonight, we are reviewing, reviewing those traffic calming measures and asking for recommendations from the board. So without further ado, you all turn it over to Clay and then I'll point to you.
Okay. So just a quick presentation online. First, we're going to take a look at the State and Safety Study completed by SRF Associates in 2020. Sure. Then we'll take a look at the South Street typical sections and state management. And then we'll go over our recommendations for traffic calming measures to South Street and a few projects stated anticipated such as. Next slide. So the state management and industry safety study extracted by SRF Associates in February 2020. As part of that report, they do the 2005, which is industry safety and traffic calming plan that was completed prior. They reviewed data that was collected, also outlined recommendations in that report and noted which recommendations. Sorry. SRF also pointed traffic data along South Street and also pointed data for other streets of the village. And then lastly, they outlined traffic calming measures and made recommendations at South Street. So this is South Street typical section. Important to note here. So between 2020, 25, paved with the roadway, travel lanes are level to the line. There are also concrete others that are both sides of the roadway, majority of the road. There is some or southbound side, approaching states. Beyond that, there are five sidewalks across the long Jordan Street. There are only sidewalks on North Belt, South Street, South Belt. So South Street is currently posted 20 miles per hour for our design safe speed. The table below is actually taken from the SRF report and it outlines traffic data collected. They collected data between Battle Nav and St. Jefferson Road and then also between St. Street. It's important to note that in general, Speeds were between twelve and sixteen miles per hour. Speed limit. Southbound. Sixty percent of the. Sixty percent of the numbers that were tried. There's also averaged and eighty-five percent of speeds with about the speed limit. Of State Street, but they weren't the same back to the same, so.
So now we're going to review our traffic calming measures. So what we're going to go through is we're going to go through what was recommended, kind of the general things that were looked at about. About the types of traffic calming measures, go through the recommendations that SRF provided within the report, as well as our recommendations for this. So on the right-hand side, you can see a table directly out of, directly out of their report. And it's very similar to other traffic calming techniques that is reviewed that will cover a little bit later on. But essentially, there's four different types of traffic calming measures. There's a horizontal deflection, which horizontally curving forward. There's a vertical deflection, so changing with first to speed bumps, speed cushions. And there's several others as well in there with regards to raised crosswalks or raised intersections. And then there's physical obstruction, so that's kind of putting things. Towards the, within the roadway space that create a physical obstruction for vehicles. And there, none of those items that we'll cover that, none of those items will recommend. Or more to be recommended examples. And then the final one is sign and behavior markings, and those are typically lower cost options for true traffic calming measures. And were found to have a moderate effect on speed reduction with minimal impact on emergency response. So South Street is noted as an emergency stop corridor for the village. And so, just like SRF, when they reviewed these criteria, we are taking it from that same standpoint of. Making sure that we're not impacting your emergency response to the negative fight. And so, kind of going through this, I know we're, we'll move on to what we're actually going to be recommending. But horizontal deflection is known for proprietary construction. Vertical deflections, as known, speed cushion adheres the only one that does not have a negative impact on the emergency response vehicles. And the physical obstructions, we didn't recommend any with that because there's no recommendations that. That would have no impact on emergency response risk. And then for sign and behavior markings, we'll cover those further down, so you can move on to the next topic. So the first one, and this is one that, that the, that was recommended within the report that we reviewed. Are speed cushions, so speed cushions are different than speed humps, because speed cushions have spaces in between them for emergency vehicles to be able to straddle them. And to be able to go through it without having to go over the hump apartment. So that's how cushions are different than speed humps. So the recommendation would be that they're permanently raised areas placed in the roadway with a dimension seven or two of speed. Hump except for if there's cutouts for vehicles for wide wheelbases such as emergency vehicles and buses. To pass through without having to drive over the cushion. Typically, these are designed to be traversed at twenty to twenty-five miles per hour, so it will, in fact, slow traffic. People won't, just like you guys have it now with your speed bumps, people, they go over it maybe once fast, and they don't do it again.
After they bottom out.
After they bottom out, yes. So one thing to note, because this is a residential corridor, that these create points when people go over them with a trailer or something that they're pulling. It's going to create a ways when. Come over. Yes, so that's something we do want to know on this. So this was recommended by SRF, this was recommended by the previous firm, and we are also hoping that recommendation to be incorporated into this project. Go ahead, next slide. So the recommended locations were within the street section between Hoyt and between Jefferson. And so, they recommend two different locations for them to be incorporated about four hundred and fifty feet apart. We will review their recommendations and adjust accordingly so that we're not negatively impacting driveways. And other such impacts.
Sorry to interrupt you, is this maybe important for the stop sign?
No.
But always this type of stop sign.
Twenty twenty, we should have, we should have mentioned this was twenty twenty and making the measurements in twenty nineteen.
Yes. This, the stop sign, they would have realm seen. So.
Now, this one is the stop sign could have an impact for this question.
Yes, no, no, so. Yeah, the stop sign, it was placed, they said.
So we will take into consideration stop conditions, we'll take into consideration driveways, we'll take into consideration the proper location, making sure we're not. Putting it right in a drainage structure, we'll look at all that stuff. This was just the recommendation that was provided within the report. So you go to the next slide. So that was the first recommendation, there is an estimated cost, and I'll cover the costs as we go through them so that you guys can calate it and talk about it at the end. Estimated cost for adding in speed cushions. Based off of priority bicycle project within the city of Rochester we did in twenty twenty-one. Estimated cost is about six thousand dollars to add into locations. It is noted also that I want, I want to make this on the record, because I know it's maintaining of roadways is important. The areas where the speed cushions are put in, the asphalt has a tendency, because it has more handworking and less with the big boulder. It has a tendency where they may deteriorate faster. Than the areas where they're rolling in the big. So those areas may require a little bit more maintenance, they may, they may wear out faster than pavement that we just put down. But based off of seeing that you guys have already put in some speed bumps, I'm not concerned with you guys needing to maintain it. If it, if it needs maintenance at times. Just want to make.
I know, so you're using the, what lane that you issued in budget. Was there any discussion to reduce it to nine feet, because a lot of places in the world would track that, reduce it to nine feet.
So nine foot is the, or sorry, eleven foot is the existing lane width. We're going to cover striping, and we can kind of talk about the width changes, but we didn't, we didn't address a typical section with change with the curves to the lanes. But we can go into it as we go for our striping, so the next ones are the striping. We hadn't anticipated. Sometimes just striping along doesn't. Doesn't really make the lane, doesn't really make the lane feel like it's. It's nine foot, especially if you don't have centerline stripe. Because right now for, and this is a great segue, so what a great question. So we'll go through the edge striping, the centerline striping, and then we can talk about the. So one of the other recommendations within the report was lane narrowing and outside edge striping. And this was something that you guys already aware is, is applied within the corridor from, from Jefferson to Hoyt now. Battleman already, excuse me. It's already applied within that area, whether the edges are striped. Again, these areas, there's no centerline striping in this area. Our recommendation went to extend this edge line striping throughout the entirety of the project, so that it creates kind of a cohesive. Cohesive view and at the, at the south end of the project, it's about twenty-two feet wide. At the north end of the project, the pavement does widen to twenty-five feet wide. So we kind of want to carry this consistency to the report with regards to lane narrowing and edge striping. And then the next striping aspect is the centerline striping, we go behind. So there's centerline striping, one, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Does that say you'd stay at twenty-two feet the entire way, or that you keep it from twenty-two to twenty-five feet wide?
So we would strike it to have a consistent lane width, so the shoulder may be a little bit wider in certain areas, but.
Maybe twenty-two all the way through.
We would keep, we would keep the striking consistent.
At twenty-two is what you think?
At twenty-two, yes, we would keep the lane, we try to keep the lane consistent. So one of the other recommendations that was in the report from two thousand and five, and I know you guys have already incorporated this. Is the centerline striping and the horizontal curve. So village streets, something we noted on this, village streets don't typically have the centerline striping consistently, this is kind of an unusual area. So we didn't recommend, and the report had recommended doing this for the entire roadway for consistency within you guys' corridors. As well as from a maintenance perspective of, you have a whole other line of stripes to maintain within the corridor. So our recommendation was to maintain, maintaining the centerline striping for the horizontal curve. Maybe extend it a little bit further for safety sake, but not to do it along the entire. One of the other recommendations that was in there was flush, and it was from two thousand and five, it wasn't from the recent reports, was a flush median, straight median. And this is something that you can see along State Street, where it's a really wide set of pavement, and it's striped out the median to make the, the lane seem narrower. We're not working with wide enough pavement here that we could really do a striped median and have it have a big impact on the corridor. So we don't recommend incorporating a striped, a striped out median in this area. So go ahead.
Being on that, though, just going back to the painted striping. Is the cost act of maintaining painted striping down the middle of the roadway that much?
I'm sorry, there's a question.
Maintaining a striped all the way through?
No, no, maintaining it is fairly simple, it's just a matter of getting, we have sprayers that puts it out fairly quick. It's the initial, the initial setup, because it all has to be measured out. Any surface treatments thereafter means we have to reestablish outlines, and that's a big process. But the maintenance, once it exists. And just going over it on a yearly basis.
Okay, so let's come back then to the idea of the center striping going beyond what you suggested. What if it were to continue down towards south or on south or down Jefferson? Like, how far can you take that realistically?
We can take the whole. If you guys are, if you guys are interested in maintaining it.
Yeah.
We can take it the whole corridor, it was just a matter of, it's not consistent with the other village streets that you guys have. So we need a kind of direction that you guys wanted to afford with, with doing this on this street, knowing that. Knowing that you have maintenance, or if you did any surface treatment on it, practically, like, you do any surface treatment, you're gonna. You're gonna need a professional striping.
So we, I was just gonna say, we have two main large roads, Southern and South, that can be considered covered.
There are main arteries.
And they are main arteries, but they're the ones that we're responsible for. But if we can maintain speeds at a lower level, to what degree does center striping lower speeds, is it meaningful?
I would say, if you want to go back to the slide that has the different alternatives, because it should be shown up there. Go back to, it should be slices. So if you see it, I know it's difficult to see, I apologize for that, so. In effect for speed reduction for transverse markings, which would not be long, well, we're looking at longitudinal markings. So it's not, oh, wait, there we go. Redway. Navigating with edge lines, narrowing with edge lines. So for speed reduction, as shown as here, having a moderate effect for edge lines, I think that. Looking at putting in centerline striping would really make it feel like you're in a lane, as opposed to having twenty, twenty-two feet of width.
Yeah.
Like, if you put a centerline stripe, it makes people feel like, hey, this is my left, this is my right, let's stay in here. So I think that that would, especially if you're interested in doing anything for lane narrowing, became lane narrow if you don't have such a thing.
Well, here's the, what I've always sort of taken away from, you know, doing things like this. Traffic calming is never one. It's, it's all the little things, perhaps, that you do. That give different types of visual cues that you go down the street, so I'm liking the idea of the centerline.
Zach, what are your thoughts?
No, no, I agree with that. I think most of what SRF was producing was based on the report at their time, asking for minimal cost, fast solutions. And they said that one thing. And outlining certain intersections just to give. Yes, like, you know, especially going from Jefferson to. Street shop.
That's a big shop.
It's really not highway above the road. No, no, the maintenance, while they're doing it anyway, really running those, those, those strakes down the center of the road or the far line isn't a side of the road. It's, it doesn't take as much time. It's the hashed out areas, it's, you know, speed tables on Shane Place. Yeah.
We put those colors in on shade.
So what?
Um, we're just using a latex, which I would paint with.
And you're going to do that, you guys solve, or do you have?
No, we do it all.
That's pretty, not very good.
So one good line is the question, to what degree do you think main strip versus the speed cushions? Speed cushions, and I just was wondering from Zach, how hard are the speed cushions to deal with?
No, no, that was actually on our, that was on our topics, but I don't think we covered it, so thank you for bringing it up.
I think there are certain applications for speed cushions, like Shane Place, the speed, the raised speed tables for crossings, where it works well. I think it's maintenance of them and the aggravation of only being able to follow the raised surface of those. Shovel out the sides of them. To me, that's a frustrating aspect.
A little more later to that one.
Yes. And, you know, this, when it was viable, so tensions weren't that bad in multiple stories where you're making for in thirty-six hours. Especially when it comes to. I'm not trying to, no, it's a question of fact, but from a maintenance perspective.
We made the decision on Shane Place, but what do you call, it's not a speed bump, what do we have on Shane Place?
Raise speed tables?
Raised speed. Those would be, have adverse impact on emergency.
Yes.
Okay. Did we make that decision to accept that on Shane Place, and that's why they're there? Or is it because it's not an emergency vehicle or whatever, that we can do that without? As much consideration?
I think those placed on Shane Place. Shane is not considered.
Can we still make the decision to have a raised speed table on a road bike itself, understanding?
Emergency services should have said.
Yeah, they need to have.
So at that point, they have input. So it's not to say that it's not possible, it's just simply to say that it would have to introduce there.
And, and for example, everything that we're talking about now, what I would recite in the report, we'd always reach out to our first responders. You know, love them now, these are changes that we, we like to make. Another example, again, is what we put in the pedestrian refuge down by the Dairy, across from Del Monte. We worked quite a bit with the first responders, you know, they ended up reducing it a bit, you know, just maybe as you were sound at the time. Right, right, exactly, so. And they, they had a rejection of that, they, yeah, anything in that South Street, because that's the main corner of the neighborhood, just, yeah, so.
So they objected to things in the median. But to the point of, of the.
They didn't like them, they didn't like them. Any speed bumps, speed.
Oh, on, on.
On South.
On South. So whether or not it's a raised table, a speed bump.
Yeah, anything that's going to slow them down.
But not, not every road in the village is considered a primary access for first responders, so that's what I, but this means, yeah.
So to continue on with that, what do you think the marginal difference in speed reduction to the, or extreme pushing? Versus additional striping in the center throughout the entire. Just throwing it out.
So there isn't a lot of these different techniques. Typically, you install them and then you do measure speeds afterwards to see how the effect of this. There isn't a, just like the mayor was saying, there isn't a do this and you'll get this, it's a combination within the corridor and then also the use of the residence, so. I think that from what we've heard, centerline striping has been in favor by the report. And the concern for maintenance is not very high on that. We did have a concern with the speed cushions with regards to the maintenance during snow activities. And unfortunately, a lot of the documents, including ones from the city and from FHWA, don't address weather conditions. In regards to, to snow. So it's really up to you guys of what, what you're willing to, to maintain and what you're, we can make recommendations. But there isn't like the one, one answer is the right answer, it's kind of like you typically do a combination of things to try to speak.
Yes, those are the ones that you can put, fit, fit into the different stuff. So the speed cushions would have to be separate.
Yeah.
One other option would be to start with paints, you know, affect the, and we can always go back and. And if you have this speed cushion, it's that you stay. and add the speed cushions that you stated, you can add them as a fact.
Yes, and so speed cushions are installed by them doing, um they create a heave-hole and they basically remove. I have actually the instruction on how they install it, in case Zach was interested. But um they can install them after the fact because on the, some of the roadways that we looked at were ones that had been installed later and were as part of the building process. So we can provide, there's a fact that, that was on the City of Rochester project, and we can provide to you guys if you're interested in doing it yourself, because I know you guys have done the speed, speed pumps. Um so.
Yeah.
But there is the striping aspect on top of this.
Okay.
Both using those.
Great. Okay, thank you, Zach.
Okay, so moving on. So, okay, so we talked about centerline striping, we can go to the next one. So the last item um that SRF Associates recommended is utilizing colored shoulders to measure reinforced narrow roadway. Um the picture here is for Southern Street, um which was the image that they have within their, within their report. Um colored shoulders obviously have a higher cost than standard striping and will require maintenance as the color fades. Um our recommendation was not to incorporate because with the south street, it would only allow us to maybe, maybe have two feet on each side of colored shoulders. And as the snow kind of progresses in the winter time, how much of that is actually going to be, be seen by, by the traffic public? Um so our recommendation was due to the maintenance aspect, the cost aspect, um and and the visualization of that, that, that south street really wasn't quite enough for this to be of a big use.
Go back to minute, um so the question that you asked about a nine foot wide lane.
Right.
And we're, we're all looking at one. Is there a reason?
So eleven was what the existing is. We're okay with, we're okay with discussing lane narrowing.
Mm-hmm.
Um we hadn't specifically said this is what the. So eleven's what the existing is. If you guys were interested in doing both centerline striping and outside lane striping, we could end up doing more of the lane narrowing aspect.
Can I ask, do, could we consider bike lane?
So you don't have to wait for a bike lane because there's only two lanes in each direction in order to do a bicycle lane.
Um can't put it on one side?
I'm, I'm thinking, give me one second. Um so if you've got you've got twenty-two feet in most, in some areas, you only have twenty-two feet. So if you ended up doing, you'd have a four foot bike lane. Um so four foot's the very, very, very minimal. They don't even have lights to stripe it as a bike lane for four. Usually it's.
I know, that's tough.
Yeah, usually we're, we're doing, um usually it's six, six, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a village. We're using it not just really for a bike lane, but also for traffic, traffic calming. So to me, it seems like it would be similar to doing this colored shoulder. Um and just giving some white space because right now they're driving in the middle of the road anyway. So just giving them four feet is better than no feet. And then it's also a traffic calming.
So pushing traffic over one side of the road and have a four foot.
Bike lane.
Um that's, you're pushing the, you're, you're pushing bike traffic to the opposite side of the construction.
If you have multiple bikes, just.
I, to me, that seems like it's opening the process, opening the door of the process.
But bike, there's not always bike lanes on both sides of the street. We know Downey, Staley, man, we had one side. I don't think they always put it.
Cut inside, it's a greater width. For multiple bicyclists.
Yeah, supposed to. Supposed to probably, so the rules of, you know.
Yeah, rules involved.
What I like though, just the idea of taking this picture and drawing some ideas, right? So the, the bike idea is one instead of the coloring on the right. But parking on the left. And did you want to comment on parking on south?
I do not recommend adding a parking on south because the width of the pavement, you, like Southern is so much wider than South Street. It really lends itself to creating these separate areas for parking or bicyclists or for um or for the colored shoulder and then also still having your minuets. If you start taking if you start putting parked cars, because as noted in the previous meeting, a lot of the folks along South Street have enough room on their, in their properties for parking. So they're really not gonna be parking on the street. And there aren't a lot of things that are, people are walking to front the street that they wouldn't necessarily park at their house. It's not like there's a, a business right there.
One of the comments was that somebody parks in the street specifically to slow traffic.
Yes, where he says, I park on the street, on the West Street to slow traffic.
No, that was on south.
On south.
Yeah. So I'm not sure. Um but the idea is, so it's twen, as you get closer to where it's faster, where it narrows, right?
It's twenty-two where it's faster, where it goes around the horizontal curve and is at a perju state street of bikes to twenty-five in certain areas.
What's the maximum width of the parking spot?
Maximal width, minimum. Usually a seven foot parking spot.
Alright. So that basically goes down.
You would end up making a single lane roadway and out with introducing this in just sporadic locations. I think it would end up being kind of part of safety concern more like, whoa, why is there a, why is there a car parked on this road? Um from this, from that standpoint. So if you pull those lines, if you, if you track common striping, and you pull the streets narrow, okay?
It's not technically a bike lane, but bike probably would use it. Right then.
We could pay that, and we could start that striping and see.
And just, right, because right now the bikers are in the street and, and I see a lot of bikers coming up. Right? So at least it would give them a little space to still be on the street, but we wouldn't have to officially call it a bike lane. But then they also would reduce the streets.
And actually, because there isn't any unsaved parking, bicycles can use.
Right. They would use it. It's better than nothing.
Yeah.
That goes along with our property's plan.
I think what I'm hearing, I think what I'm hearing is squeeze the road in, widen the uh
shoulders, but not specifically have a bike lane.
Bike lane, but.
Don't call it a bike lane.
And then let's see how it goes. And then maybe you do add in a few more. Oh, yes, yeah, it's great, but then put three cars and pedestrians. Right, the bicyclist will find, you know, will find a shoulder, they'll find anything.
Right, at least it gives them something.
Yeah.
Because now they have nothing.
Alright.
Okay, and then um the last slide. So I just wanted to know, we didn't look at, we didn't just look at the traffic calming report that was provided. We also reviewed NHWA, NHWA's traffic calming primer and also the City of Rochester, um never had traffic calming manual. Most of their practices would require vertical would require vertical or horizontal reflections, which could require a major roadway reconstruction for more applicable for intersection modifications. So a lot of the stuff they had wasn't applicable for this roadway. Um and we didn't see anything additionally that we would like to incorporate. But if we move to the next slide, because it was brought up in the last meeting, we didn't want to cover chicanes. Um so chicanes, um for those that are not aware, are curb extensions that alternate from one side of the streets to the other forming an S-shaped curve, which requires, it does require landscaping, um and emergency response facilities over like the traditional speedhumps. So um so chicanes on this roadway, this, again, we're not a gutter section where we don't have raised curves. These are typically applied um on like the downtown city streets where you have very slow speeds and they have raised curves. And they basically end up adding landscaping where they've adjusted the traffic. So the obstacles to incorporating this into the project would be that it would be a major reconstruction. Roadway drainage and curb. Um the current right of way only has eleven feet on each side of the curb. So if we're having any horizontal deflection on the roadway, there's potential to have right of way impacts to property owners. Um driveway access can also be an issue. There's utility impacts for the overhead electric that we saw on those corridor. Um sidewalk impacts because again, there's sidewalk. And if we're adjusting the, the roadway to create these horizontal reflections, we could be taking out the sidewalks there, which would be in contradiction to the same. You think that you guys.
I will be in parts of this.
Lot of, there's a lot of stuff that goes into this.
Yeah.
Um.
That was true.
Yeah, okay. Um we also uh maintenance for street clearing as well and then also um the environmental permitting aspect. If we're doing major reconstruction on the roadway and changing drainage to some, or jeopardy to change our permitting aspect, which I know is already kind of been approved. It's in time too for this project. Um and it's outside of the scope of the project. Or outside work in the current structure. So just wanted to cover that. I know we went over really quick, um but because it was brought up and asked by multiple people, wanted to make sure that you guys were informed. Um and I think that's all we have.
Yeah, I was just going to say that when, yeah, the chicanes were being discussed, it was mostly at the intersection of Bow. Um as it means to be able to slow people down in there. Um and the chicanes would have been on the opposite side of Bow. So it potentially could have enough room to be able to shoot travel there without having to go into. Just.
Talking like a west side bump out, like when the bump comes to it.
Yeah.
So just bump out.
Yep, so everything would just kind of shift a little bit closer into that intersection, into Bow and slightly.
So on that topic, this is kind of what I was thinking, but not specific to the intersection. So rather than the chicanes, can you do like periodic bump outs that don't approach upon ten foot wide roadway?
It's not gonna, you're not gonna need enough juice for your cheese.
Okay.
Because, and I know that's a funny, that's a term that's not, not everyone's used to, but um this roadway does not have curb. It's got gutter.
Yep.
So if we start adding bump outs, we have to change the time, which could also impact the type of um drainage system that we have in that area. So bump outs for this, again, we're not, we're not trying, we looked at the different types of bump outs and doing the bump outs for where you typically are seeing it from parking. There's all other types of, but for this corridor, the type of the curb that's there, it doesn't really lend itself to doing bump outs.
It's probably the same too, right across about the intersections. Yeah, okay.
So um so kind of what I'm hearing from here is that you guys would like to see the centerline striping. You'd like to see the edge line striping, you'd like to see some lane narrowing, adding some of the width back into the shoulders, which is the travel lanes to try to slow traffic. Not marking it as a bicycle lane because it's not gonna be wide enough for that. Um and uh you guys are understanding of what should be, in fact, that we won't be providing that into the project. Discussing the schedule, and this is the last thing, and we'll all open up for any questions. Um we are looking at how our plans submitted for review in April. So very soon. Um finalizing the design and spec book in May. Um the bond aid funds may be available as soon as June. And as the bonds are available, we can advertise this for construction. So advertising, we recommend a three week advertisement for construction. Um and then after that three weeks, you open the bids, review, we review and recommend, make a recommendation in the village board would have an action to award the contractor. So we're looking at, if we're able to finalize the design in May, get the funding for the, get the bond funding for you guys, have that, that we would be awarding as early as mid-July with construction, an eight week schedule starting the third week of August and running to the end of March. So that's kind of our, that's a, um if you want to bid in this year, that's kind of the timeframe that makes the stuff. Go ahead.
First, it's, it's supposed to get it. And then the, I guess, one term. Effect about the buses have been revamped between the seventies. We want to leave, talk to the school.
So the only way to do that would be to do it next year.
And we can talk to schools about it and see, you know, maybe I guess the options to. I know, I know. Because we have so many schools.
Is the, is the road open one way, is it directional at times during construction or is it closed up?
So um Wood Street would be as a reconstruction as we discussed in the previous meeting. And so Wood Street, it would be phased as if they could construct one side at a time essentially and provide access to the property owners. South Street, since it's only millimeter servicing, they can keep one lane open for traffic. They shouldn't have to, they shouldn't have to close the roadway. They should have, you know, let them do splatters and do a safely.
Okay.
We can talk to the school, you know, help them out, find out, just the way, taking the first responders.
In the sidewalking, uh remind me again, sidewalks would not include.
So only the curbs. I should have addressed that. I apologize. I was very focused on the speed management. Um so we are reconstructing the sidewalk programs on South Street where they did not meet compliance.
So then what's our next?
To, to say what do we want? Whether we want to. Yeah, we will make the speed cables, the speed tanks and have that in motion and. Whether we want to go ahead with the project and then check the homework south and go back to speed tanks and. Well, I know, I'm thinking, you know, I just kind of like, I do, at least getting all the striping in, you know, really starting with that because I think I think like, you know, we mean it, you think, yeah, you know, we're all trying to, you know. Let's take a little. And um and then, then get that, that call taken in, talk to first responders, you know, there's people who will be present and anything that sees.
So just be pushing, and you guys, but can you guys, right, you need someone from yourself.
Yeah. We can always add it in, it's not that it's. Sorry.
If we have to switch back.
Okay, we can spend the discussion time earlier and we'll be drunk for five minutes.
Trustee Co., trustee Marshall, trustee Lickin, trustee Mathier.
Motion.
Yeah. Thank you.
I make a motion, are you ready?
Oh, I am so ready.
To make a motion to read during the meeting? Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Co.
I'm trustee Mathier.
Alright.
Trustee Ollie.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Ocean Cassis.
Okay, thanks everybody for your patience with the technology. Uh we just wanted to sort of close things out here, see kind of what the action items are. Um so we left off with certainly doing the striping, all of, all of the painting that we talked about. Anything else from the board? Trickets? I think that was kind of it. I mean, it was just, let's get going with that because we know we can always add things in, you know.
So do you give us a proposal of the cost of that?
So I have the, actually I have the cost right here. So the cost for um for the construction for you're basically looking at for striping, if you wanted to do central line and outside striping, you're looking at probably about twenty-three.
Same cost, Zach, do you do, you do your work or do they do your work?
That's, I'm assuming.
This is contract, this is by contractor. So this is the striking, our engineers estimate based off of recent bids.
Okay.
It's gonna be about two dollars, two dollars per linear foot, so.
Okay.
Is that something we could do perhaps?
So I do want to point out, as I was just telling Caitlin, um we do do it with an airless spray. As to where the company that they would be paying this money to do it would be coming in and probably using this for a fade down motion. Or something more of a DOT.
Sort of more substantial, is what I'm understanding.
Um, yeah, I mean, if we, if we wanted to do it, we could do it, but we don't have the same equipment as what they have. So um I think what we'd be satisfied in the end, um if we wanted to do it, and it's just the cost of the paint.
Yeah, yeah, Lisa, I know.
I was saying, right, I mean, why don't we do it with us first and see what makes the difference? And, and if it's something that does and we want to have it redone by, you know, the better paint or whatever, then we could redo it, but I might as well do it now.
Yep, yep.
It might be something you want to make as an option in your bid specs.
Yeah.
To see what the cost would be. That way you can save the door out.
Just to see, just to see how it shakes out.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes um just paying for that initial cost upfront, um it, it is helpful. And Shane Place used to be done like that as well as for accounting with, you know, where it was on county contract and come through in Shane Place. Um and then it gives, it gives us the baselines and then start doing thereafter.
So you can go over it with air spray or paint. And so you have, you know, essentially, essentially the template or, you know.
There is a little less longer.
Okay.
Do it right the first time.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, thereafter, the maintenance and the costs start with. But again, established.
But we can put that in the bid specs. I like that.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, want, anything else to add on this?
No.
Yep.
So I think that's it. And then I also heard that you guys didn't want speed cushions added as part of this project. You would investigate adding it later in the villages for, for you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we will not include that with this.
Yeah, we all, yeah, okay, so we have, everybody nodding in the same direction.
And that's all, that's all we have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is really helpful.
Thank you, we appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, thanks for your good work, okay.
We'll see you in the first.
To be continued, right, to be continued. Okay, next. The Frog House.
A, A Frog House.
A Frog House, I'm so sorry, you're right, it was said on Frog House, okay, so we will amend this, A Frog House.
Mini.
There's a chair right there for you.
Why, I, I can't sit down yet. So the first question is, is it considered a bribe if I give each of you a book about wetlands?
How much is the cost of the book? How much is the cost? It has to be under twenty-five dollars.
It's.
I thought it was under fifty now. I think that's what Nikon said.
Well, anyway, it is under twenty-five dollars because, because I got a fifteen, fifteen percent discount for Save the Frogs.
If you, if we didn't do this individually and you just donated one to Village Hall, would that be acceptable?
Well, you may not all model under the price, they're pretty dense and heavy.
For twenty-nine ninety-five.
It depends, no, no, but I got a fifteen percent discount.
Less fifteen percent, okay, so, so that's great, you don't carry the one, okay. Still.
You can have Tom sign it for you too, if you approve his coming, so that's the next question.
We can always pay you for them too.
Are these my papers?
No, this is full.
You're mine.
Late night reunion.
Okay, so I'm gonna be brief. And so we have invited Tom and, and paid for his visit. And he is a wetland expert, as you probably see in your little packet of, of thirty-five years, and he's done ten thousand.
Yeah, it's really.
Wetlands, and he does it sustainably, and he does it not only sustainably, but also cheaply.
I think I have one more for you to work through here.
You don't have one, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, someone will share.
Yeah, you can.
That's all right. Is.
But I don't know what I'm saying, so.
Here, you can have this one, and then I'll share.
Okay, so the first thing is, is that uh, you have in your packet the description of Tom, which you're showing right there. And I'm giving you the copies of the book, and I just want you to, I would ask if anyone is against your having Tom buy a big house or visit. Is there anyone who wouldn't like him to visit for any reason?
Does it, in what way?
Well, he's going to come on April eighteenth and nineteenth, that's who fits in with his schedule. And he would like to, or he is offered to give a presentation on the eighteenth.
And that's the one hosted here at Village Hall?
Which would be hosted here at Village Hall, and uh, and then he has also invited people to, if you really have an investment in the, in the village arboretum and know about the property, that you could come along and walk along with him. Um, he doesn't want like six different groups of large people coming at different times, so we've arranged a three o'clock schedule on Friday, the nineteenth, that I would invite each of you to. And then, um, and in addition to the presentation, but if some of you want to come and talk to him on, on Saturday, Thursday while he's walking around, because you know the property and you know what you like and what you want and what other people want, you're invited, and I mean, first of all, the first priority goes to the, to the five of you, and, but anyone else you feel is important and knows about it. I've let Andy Smith know about it, who made a plan for the, the town last year. And I've told Jim Pippin, who is on the environmental board, and he's also an environmental engineer. So I don't know if they want to come or not, but.
So, so do we have to do an approval for that? I mean, you're just.
I don't know, I'm inviting you.
I think you just want to share really what's going on, and I, I appreciate you kind of doing all the front end work and arranging this.
Yeah.
For the community, I think.
Well, I didn't know if I was allowed.
I don't think it's up to you, you just scheduled.
But I do, I, I do want to make sure that someone is here to see his presentation.
Right, and we, we can post it and, you know, put it up for the community, but the, the one thing is that if we are gonna walk the arboretum, if we have the time and the date, we may want to publicly notice this. Depending on, you know, so.
How many people can make it? I know I'm gonna be on vacation.
That's right, you're gonna be away, but um, you know, just if we have a forum, we have to, we have to notice it to the public. So we would want to.
I think that's why I'm here, I think that's why I'm here. I also have a whole bunch of flyers. And um, so we'll be putting them up on the canal as usual. And um, if you want to, I can sign you up, I won't sign you off, Lisa. Um, but if you want to send a friend, I can sign your friend up.
We'll post this and let people know.
Yeah, do you want any more than the ones I'm giving out?
What we can do, do you have a digital copy of this?
Yes.
If you can send it, yeah, just send it, send it to.
You're so faithful.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that'll, that'll be helpful for us on our own, for sure.
Okay, so the thing is, is that I want to give you guys a chance because I think only sixty people fit in this room. So the rest would have to be hybrid Zoom, and um, so it would be first come, first served. And um, and, and I'd like to know so we can plan and arrange and have Tom available for the time, so if you look at page two.
I have a quick question, this is kind of a legal question, I guess, are we able to post this on the village website if they're asking for donation, is it?
Oh, donors for donation.
The rule, we can leave it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can leave that off, yeah.
I didn't know it said donate.
He was just posting us, it's a public, yeah, whatever you guys want to do, you do.
Right.
You do you.
Okay, so if you want to just fill out the, the back sheet, I'll take them home and I'll send everybody up. Just so that you are, you have a seat, for sure, or if, if you want to come on the walk or some whatever, here.
Unfortunately, I, I would love to, but I'm gonna be out of town on those.
You always are out of town, Justin.
He's a busy guy.
Yeah, he's got a place in, in, on the lake, I think.
Okay, well, I, I can get back to you on this, I'll look at my schedule, I think we all, then I have to check our schedules, we so appreciate this.
I bet you can't wait to go home. I'm ready.
The meetings are.
And I've, I've learned not to be like.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks so much, thank you, this was great.
Thanks, Margaret.
Really appreciate it. Oh, yeah. What, what about the RFP?
Yes.
RFP for invasive species removal. Yeah, thanks, Torcia, for putting that together and working with Prism.
Yep.
That was great, you know, and they were really great turning it around, which is wonderful.
He made some minor changes, I included those, I hope I captured it the way they intended.
Oh, and let's send that, what you did back to them, just to close out that, just, yeah.
So.
I think you got it.
The board is good with the RFP, we can set a date to put this out.
Can, can I just clarify on this? It, it seems very, very broad to say in the arboretum and other properties, can we tell them where this is? If they're gonna be responding to an RFP, where, where do we intend to have them work from?
Would, in what part, I mean, other properties?
Yes.
It would be, it would be other municipal green spaces, you know, like, or, you know, pocket parks, Auburn Park. Zach, you know, we're, this is, because this, the way we put together the motion.
Whole grove of land.
All the Atlantis there, right?
That could be part of it.
Yeah.
They're, they're scattered here and there.
So I guess what I would do is, since this is a limited amount of funding, and they're not, you know, we've, we've got, when, when I was thinking about this originally, I was thinking about just having it in one place, I don't know why they would run, why we would have a contractor run all around the village to different pocket parks, I would just focus it on one place.
Well, the, the motion that was made by the board, and I'm not, not saying no, but the motion that was made by the board was that it was for the arboretum and removal of invasives throughout the village. That it could be anywhere, you know, as I recall.
And how much money is this?
How much was it again?
The ARPA funds put aside fifteen thousand for the arboretum and other.
In base, in other, that, that we would identify.
It all predates me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just feel like it's, I don't, I, I think that money is not gonna go very far, so I would just have them focus on one place.
I would agree with you, we should just probably go to the arboretum then, because it's all in one spot, we know there's a ridiculous.
Clear button, trees.
I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, and, and as we know too, with, with the invasive species removal, this is never a one and done, it is, we are looking at a decade of just ongoing mediation.
Other village properties? Yep.
Thanks, yeah, I feel like that'll help them to respond efficiently and not spend time setting up at different sites.
And then we can, you know, in the future, look at other locations that have Atlantis as well. Any other, any other thoughts on the? We're all reading.
So you said that this is fifteen thousand dollars from the, well, they have this on what? We were beaming from ARPA to yours. Who knows what the bid will be when we take a walk?
We know we have fifteen K, and we could say we can only have fifteen K worth of work, or okay, if they come in at maybe twenty G, do we come up with another five, you know, I mean, we just don't know till we get the bid back. That's why we're issuing the RFP, just to get the information.
So I guess the question to the board is, if you're good with everything else for the RFP, um, I could legally post it, but you want me to give it back to Prism?
But the only, the only reason why I say that is that they had suggested the change.
And I, I think I encompassed what they.
I think you did, but it just, even as a courtesy, just to say, geez, we did put it, nothing, you know, because they were really helpful.
Okay, so let's say they were relatively fast getting it back, if we delayed that a week, let's say we go for a posting for, it would hit the papers April eleventh. And I would say three to four weeks for a bid, just to allow proper time, so maybe have bids due, we have a board meeting. Oh, I don't know when we're meeting. So where are we? Feel like we're meeting all the time, um, you know. Where are we in March, I'm saying? May. May, I think it's the fourteenth. Fourteenth. Yep, we can go to having it due May sixth, that would give plenty of time.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a couple pieces of information I need in the RFP. And we, one of the things we would be setting a site visit, I'd arrange that with Zach in there.
Oh, yes.
I need to know the approximate miles of required treatment.
Miles?
That's core. You could say yard.
I believe what Prism said was they wanted the approximate diameter.
No, no, the space, helping.
The area, the area to be covered.
Yes, I, I remember that, I, I, at one point they're talking about like the cumulative diameter of all that needs to be treated.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did mention that.
That's in there, you didn't read what I thought.
It's great reading, it's really.
I was so spoiled for it.
Um, we could change it, it says the owner requires approximately blank miles of required treatment.
Square miles?
Yeah, whatever you guys.
Would we say, would we say acres?
You could, I think that would be a more accurate way to put it.
Just because the nature of the land.
We could, we could do it with both, because it's just a matter of square.
I know, but.
Is that something you can give me to fill in the blank?
How much do you do?
Well, apparently by a full one.
Okay.
What's on my agenda? I would just put something really, just say a quarter acre. I would go big instead of, and, and then they'll say, we can't do that, but we can do, say half of the arboretum.
I mean, we, we have ten acres in the RFP, which is.
Say five acres.
Say five acres.
But also there were, there were specific areas, so maybe you can chime in, that were identified, that you really wanted to make sure there were eradicated.
Certainly major hit areas.
Yeah.
And then the balance might just be a little outland patches.
So why don't we, why don't we get back with you guys on the major hit areas? And then measure those out, you know, to prioritize it, because, you know, there's already been, you know, your, your team's already been in there kind of, you know, pulling out these little Atlantis. Maybe you want to go back into where it was already started, really try to, you know, nail it down, get the natives planted, you know, overseed all the stuff.
If, we could mark up a, a map that you can then pull that from, that you have something to include in your bid. So they can go out and take a walk and figure out how they get their equipment and you'll get a cleaner.
Yeah, I like that.
Is this focusing on just the tree of heaven, or is this the knotweed?
Knotweed is mentioned.
It's mentioned, but.
And, and just those two invasives over here?
That's the only thing.
Those are the biggies right now.
Just to note, like, the difference between one acre is point zero zero one five square miles. And three acres is point zero zero four six square miles. So if we put point zero zero five square miles, right, we're talking somewhere between three and four acres. And there's not that much ground coverage at all, you're probably talking at most one acre total, and it's not even that. So for me, I wouldn't even go through any work, I would just put point zero zero one square miles.
I would do acres.
And if you do acres, do one acre.
I would just do acres, and I would look at the areas that are the priorities that you've already started. I, I do like the idea of putting it on a map, making, bringing as much clarity, especially in an RFP. Yeah, sure. You know, because they don't know this area, you know, they need, the more information you can give anybody in RFP, the better, the, the better your response.
I can actually take the line out if the board wants, the owner requires approximately blank, I could just leave the site visit will be scheduled and, and then we can review the map area.
And you know, put in as for attached map.
Yes, a reference.
I think you'd give them a map.
Okay.
Where we're going.
All right, I'll put.
Okay.
You don't want them to drive out here and look at it, you're like, oh gosh, that's not, and that's what's bothering.
Okay.
All right, any other input for, for Dorothea, I mean, I think we have the dates.
Oh, I think I will. All right, so we're advertising, I need it for advertising by April eighth back from Prism, and can you have your map to me by then?
All right, April.
Eighth.
Eighth, yeah. That's two.
Well, that's the eclipse.
Yeah.
So maybe, and the eclipse is on a Monday?
All right, so then that's gonna change it to April fifth.
Yeah, April fifth, we're gonna need everything by April fifth.
That's a week and a half.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's rocket science. It's a map, it's looking at areas, I know it does, but I think we can get it done, if I can help you guys, I'll, you know, we can make it happen.
If you want to send me a map too, I can take a look and turn it up, get some areas out from that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you've generated that hash map.
You can all put two S, yeah.
There we go.
Unless the board wants, we'll be sending to the paper to April eighteenth.
Well, I, don't you think we can stick to the schedule, are there any problems? Let's just keep it moving.
Yeah, we've got a small letter of request.
Okay, and that's an opening on May sixth.
Yep.
And I would say that would be at noon or eleven AM.
Yep.
For eleven AM.
Yeah.
So I'll need approval for the board to advertise this.
Anybody want to make a motion? Oh, well done, Zach jumped on it. Okay, we have a motion, a second vote, please.
Trustee Mathier.
Aye.
Trustee Co. Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, the resolution to establish energy benchmarking requirements to certain buildings. Good night, thank you.
Thank you, have a good weekend, we're happy to meet.
Okay. So we have.
Thank you, thank you.
You have the resolution, thanks for your work on this, gentlemen.
It's largely the same as what's been in progress.
But it's only municipal buildings.
Right.
It's not any, any other buildings other than us, okay. Okay.
Jeff, you wrote it.
I plugged Stephen. I plugged Stephen and then the board.
Okay. So, and this is based on the discussion that, you know, we have with Rob Richardson, that this is the way for us to actually move the program forward as a climate smart community.
And Rob is going to do the portal for us.
Yeah, he's going to, he's got the portal, he's going to plug in all the info, which is great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any thoughts on the document or is there a motion?
Seeker first.
Oh, Seeker, yes, we do need to do Seeker.
Type 2, 617.5A. I'm sorry, C27.
Okay, so we just declare that it is type, is a type 2.
Make a motion to declare this a type 2 action by Seeker.
Do we, do we need to cite the reference on that, Jeff? Okay, we don't, okay. We have a motion, a second, vote please.
Okay, Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
There a second, please?
Okay. Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. It's reasonable. Next up, the Monroe County Water Authority contract, which is absolutely riveting reading.
Looks like it was written on a typewriter.
I know, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Intrigued by carbon.
DVD port, hey, that's how I started learning how to type.
Sure.
I'll be honest, I didn't read it. I wrote an RFP for invasive alkanes.
You were, you were in another area of the village.
My hope is that Jeff understood.
We had a meeting regarding this issue, about the history of the village.
Pretty heartily written.
Yeah.
And much more complicated.
High school auditorium, several pages.
My understanding is, at one point, we did it on the water. Went to the county and said, hey, you can do the water. But for you to do the water, you're going to put in a whole bunch of equipment. And then we basically had a contract that many, many, many years later, we didn't renew it every 10 years or something. Eventually it ends. And we've reached a point where that contract, so long ago, ends. And we have to essentially decide, or maybe go back to the county and say, hey, you want to re-up it as it was? And continue it further, basically enter into a brand new agreement because this agreement doesn't by default continue.
No, but you could continue.
You could continue it.
So you just create an amendment that does another 40 years.
Another 40?
Sure.
So we could go.
I will not be here to advise.
Now, is this a negotiation with the county? Or is the county basically, hey, we want to just keep doing what we're doing? And we say to them, hey, are you willing to continue to do what you do?
Will somebody approach you then?
The, I mean, you guys can sit down, we'll discuss it.
But what did they say?
This 40-year agreement is about to expire. Take a look at it, let me know if you have any questions. And if you want to me, let me know, to discuss it. That's it.
All right, so.
It sounds like I just wanted to just keep.
The option. I mean, there's no other option really, because if you don't sign it, we're probably going to have to retake ownership of the system, which might include another 40-year agreement, saying that they now have a depreciating value of the equipment that they've put in on top of our.
I don't think we're going the other way. So did they say anything other than?
Here it is.
Here it is, like.
Take a look at it, let me know what you think. Let's, let's kick it off for another 40 years.
Okay.
This is a fine agreement. It would be fine to continue it for 40 years and 10-year increments.
I'm over that.
We'll just do some kind of amendment to the agreement, continuing it, releasing some of the conditions at 10-year increments. And I think the action I would be to authorize Zach and I to explore that with the water authority.
Follow up on that, make sure.
Can we write the amendment with a typewriter too?
You can.
Can we use it? No, can we use it? They don't need it, run it off.
This is a motion, this is just.
It's a direction.
It should be a motion to direct.
Okay, so a motion?
So moved. I'll make a motion to direct our attorney and Zach to work together with Monroe County to come up with an extension of terms for the relationship we have with Monroe County Water Authority.
Is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. That was stereo, okay.
All right, Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Mayor Plummer, real quick, it's been brought to my attention, we neglected Seeker on the special permit.
That's right.
It was a type 2.
It was a type 2, we brought it up to the board.
But you didn't do a motion, a second to declare it.
Oh, okay.
So do we have to do one first and then do the motion? Okay.
I mean, if you want to do, if you want to do a, a motion declaring it to be a type 2, which I'm not convinced is necessary, but you did that thing after we did the other one.
Yeah.
Well, someone's looking for a motion, so.
I'll make a motion to declare the special permit application for, with the 7 Monroe Avenue to be a type 2 action by Seeker. Second.
Okay, we'll call. Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the conditions previously mentioned. In full.
I second.
We'll call.
Okay, Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I do stand to thank you to the resident for bringing that forward, even though we may or may not need it.
Yep, but we got the motions.
Yep, so it's great, it's always good to do it now, residents.
Absolutely, I say belt and suspenders. Okay. Moving along. Discussion on the multi-year financial and capital plan.
Any work done on that yet?
Actually, I did do some work on it today.
Okay.
I'm kind of, I believe I'm where the board left off. I want to sit with the mayor and Zach to make sure I got everything as we had discussed.
What was pulled out, what was played, with those numbers.
The only concern I have is we didn't direct to 27, 28 or the following year. So I don't have any official instructions.
Push it all into 26, 27, and then we got to get back on the horse and keep our staff going.
Yep. 24, 25, it's all confusing.
First two years are good.
First two years are good.
All good.
You might even have had.
Both of them as part of three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we weren't sure on that.
So what I think is our next action is to schedule another budget meeting. I know everybody's missed each other and not having a meeting is sad. So do we want to try to schedule that for next week? Would the board like to have a week off and I can go the following week?
Oh, we have, this is Easter weekend, okay. Oh, and it's the break, right?
Yeah, the problem I have is, we're off on Friday, we have training on Thursday, so.
Friday, the 4th and 5th, Thursday, Friday, 4th and 5th?
No, they're off this Friday.
This Friday will close.
Yeah.
And on Thursday, there's a day of training. Emergency training for all staff.
Our next meeting is April 9th.
Are you working on the 1st?
To post for the 1st, I don't have enough time to get that together.
Okay, how do you guys feel about maybe the 4th and just try it out?
4th, I can do, I can.
What I'm thinking is.
I'm not here on the 4th or the 5th.
5th? That puts us on the, what about meeting on the 8th prior to the eclipse?
Eclipse.
Eclipse.
What about the 3rd?
About the 9th.
About the 9th.
Well, the 9th is our normal 9th.
I know, but we can maybe start, start earlier.
I got an idea. So Mayor Dorothea, we had a nice discussion last time, trying to hammer some of this stuff out. I think we all have the same goals and intent on what we're doing. There's nothing new and special here, we're just trying to push it out further. How about I try to come in and visit on the 2nd, like you did last time?
And just.
And then if you could send it to everybody.
Dave, Dave's going to come in and work internally with staff. And they'll collapse the timeframe because we're all kind of on the same path. So.
I think that sounds good. And I appreciate the, your work on that, Dave. I'm, I'm just wondering, my, my question is about the scheduling. If we are going to put that towards a public hearing on the same timeline as the, the budget, what is our window for doing that?
We're looking at the, I believe, the 30th or the public hearing or the adoption of the budget. We're looking at the public hearing for the budget in April 9th.
So, but we would look to do the public hearing for the, because we don't have as much wiggle room with the capital plan as we do with the budget due to the, the state laws surrounding that, we're just looking to have the public hearing for the capital plan be at the same date as the adoption of the budget, right?
We could.
On the 30th.
So then what, what, how much time do we need for?
If we can hammer it out and we have a solid work session on the 2nd and everybody's comfortable, the drafts are addressed and everything's good, we could send it to public hearing on the 9th or the 30th and we'd be fine.
Okay, great.
Send it to public hearing.
On the 9th when we're already.
When we're meeting, just send it to public hearing and then on the 30th. Public hearing will be on the 30th.
Yes. And it's possible on the 9th we sit down, we look at it, we're like, all right, let's make some other amendments themselves.
Right.
But the good thing is, I recall from the budget to the one for capital plan, the budget essentially is good based on the one for capital plan. It's just a matter of all the years that come.
Correct.
And my goal would be to meet on the 1st or the 2nd and then have something sent to all of us by the 5th.
That's great.
Yeah. Is the 1st better than the 2nd then, or is the 2nd the way to go anyway?
If we're sitting there, I can have the plan in front of me in the computer and move and edit.
In just real time.
All right, let's plan on the 2nd. Sorry, do you want to just put it in for the same new sort of thing?
Sure, and we can sort it even off. So we can, you know, we got the 2nd, we'll sort off the time. Yep, thanks, that's great. Okay, next up, discussion on short-term rentals.
At some way we have to have this discussion, it is quarter of 9.
I know, we need it, we need it.
It's a big thing.
This is a lot, this is a lot of discussion.
I acknowledge that.
This, this needs a special, this needs a special.
I want to, I want to share this with the board, so we might need copies. This is just for your information and want to give one to, to give us as well. Anyway, it's just, City of Palm Springs had a separate rental agreement that tenants have to, have to supply to the, to the city.
For short-term rentals?
So we talked about that, so maybe you could help.
Send it out so we can all take a look, how's that?
Given that it's on, it was on the agenda, maybe Dorothea could ask if there's any public input.
Yeah, definitely, we can do that.
And maybe the board can talk about setting a date.
With 1st, yes. And maybe we can do that right after the budget's done. And we can have a real good concentrated special meeting on short-term rentals. Because we have a little time.
Yeah, because the work order ends in July.
Yeah.
As I recall. Well, we've talked about whether, I don't think we decided whether we're going to extend or not.
Which we could, but I'm just saying, still even have a window, that's all I'm saying.
I do have a timeline on this.
I know.
Remember what it was.
I don't remember it all either, it's monotonous.
Here's the challenge, but work orders are fine as long as you're showing progress. If we quit showing progress, if it always is the front item, like, hey, let's not do it tonight, next, let's not do it tonight, next. Eventually you open yourself up to a risk if you decide to extend and you did nothing for a period of a month or two.
Yeah, but we're going to hold, we're going to hold a workshop.
We'll set a meeting, we'll set a meeting, Jake.
Then this is our meeting.
That's where we're going.
Uh, great.
So we'll set.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same wavelength.
I think we're all good.
Yep, we're all the same.
I'm okay extending the work order as long as you're showing, consider it ever.
Okay.
Okay.
Where you get a little punchy.
I know.
Well, they may not like the results, so punchy is better than bad.
And I have really good news, we don't need to do item number nine because Steve, Steve addressed really what was needed to move forward, you know, just with the grant for the, you know, that whole thing, so.
So we just have to set a meeting date for the short-term rental special meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think Dorothea has left the state. I think she's headed towards the Pennsylvania border.
Well, when are we, when would be looking for that?
Why don't we have Dorothea poll the board for the, for the date?
Can we hold on to this and send happens to the board?
That's what, that's what's going to happen. We don't need copies right now.
Yeah, just put it on.
We, we actually really resolved a number of things while you were heading for the Pennsylvania.
I'm gone, Kevin, next.
No, we're going to ask you to poll the board to set up a, a specific date after the budget for specifically an STR meeting, you know, workshop. Which I think totally makes sense because it's, it's a big thing.
Okay, I'll be happy to do this, make copy of this now.
And I have. And make sure Steve gets it. Yeah, and I have more good news, we're not doing item number nine because Steve covered it.
I was looking for it tonight.
What was that again?
Not doing the clean energy communities because Steve could trust it, it is his report. He's in the audience, he wanted to speak to STR.
Do you want me to be attending this STR reading or not?
There's no one online.
I think you said no less.
I know, but I'm wondering now because we're real, we're potentially, why don't we, we sort that? We'll sort that out, you know, okay. But I think we're, yeah, what, what are you going to?
I was just going to say, I think it may be helpful, only because to the degree that anybody has ideas that may be unsupported.
That's true legally.
We would need to understand the risk of instituting such a restriction. And unless you want to share with us the only dials that we have, like, there may be some dials that are tested and there's probably many dials that haven't been as far as what you can use or incorporate as part of your legislation. So the challenge will be determining to what degree, if any, we want to impose restrictions and controls or, and then to what degree does that introduce risk, if any? Or are we just leaning on things that have already occurred? Now, you may not be able to know that until you do the work after we have our discussion, Now, you may not be able to know that until you do the work after we have our discussion, but I think it might be helpful.
But also, you, you could get, we could give you direction based on what comes out of that workshop.
Right.
Real time, so that, that could be a good thing as well.
Yeah.
Um, but Dorothea's going to poll the board for dates, we'll sort it all out. Um, anybody have member items?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first one is, um, the idea of having special permits with your few and farthest meetings. Have Jeff consider, or direct Jeff to create some code whereby any special permit requires public notice to, uh, nearby residents in the same way that a site plan, uh, major site plan works, right? And the idea here being is we just basically committed a multi-use family, um, dwelling next to a single-family residence, wherein the single-family residents didn't have any notification, um, that that was going on, and.
Well, it's publicly posted, I, I know where you're going with that because of the specifics of, of directing a notice, I totally do. But we also decided that it had no impact on the neighborhood, so I feel like we're kind of, what do we do? But I, I, I'm not against that, I'm not against that at all.
We see them so few and far between.
Yeah, I know where you're going.
I, I think it makes sense, but Dorothea has a comment.
I got a comment, I'm not against it.
Yeah.
I'm against mailings, is what I'm against. Mailings, um, these go to homeowners, or they come back, and they don't end up where they need to be. I think the best thing you can do in, in look at the code book, because I think there are some concerns in the way it's directed for notices, is to put in there just posting this property, that has the best effect.
Oh, sign off, yeah, yeah, Steve does that, Steve does that already.
I mean, you're paying sixty cents a mailing to go out to each homeowner.
Yeah, I don't do, I'm not, I'm not planning on.
Yeah, you do, no, that's what I'm saying, you already do it, you know, you understand the process, that's all, nothing more than that.
I mean, I'm not in this agreement, but I think that would be cleaner, it would save the mailing cost, I think for everything, stop the mailings.
We need a site plan right now, do we have to mail to everybody?
Site plan, just mail.
And post?
Yeah.
Post, mail, how do you mail to everybody within five, five hundred feet?
You don't mail to every resident, you only mail within the perimeter.
But it still ends up being costly.
I know, it does, and then they, they.
They don't have the impact that you think they have.
Yeah, that's true, I, we've gotten that beat up, but I like the idea of posting it, what do you guys think?
Let me just back up, say, impact is, um, relatively unknown, because if it's not a contentious item, nobody's going to respond. If it is a contentious item, then the five hundred feet matters. What I would argue is, what if we, or could we include the cost of that as a variable in the special permit or the site plan, so then we recoup our costs? Have it be part of the fee.
But, if, if you really look at the special permit, the options for a special permit, this, that, that was the odd man out. You'll never see that again in Israel, the rest of those special permits for hairdresser or restaurant. It's a, I, I don't know that there's much else, so, I mean, do you really need to do mailings and do all? I don't, I have no problem with, like, states doing the, the posting like they do on the state.
Sure, I understand.
And putting that in front, but the, the impact of, of a restaurant or a hairdresser.
Well, the impact of a restaurant is probably far greater than the impact of a second story on a garage.
Right, but they, you know what I'm saying, they just, it's.
I, I don't know, I think this is, public notice is good in this instance, and so putting a sign out front, I, if, if you want to make an argument, I'd say the immediate two adjacent properties, so you just mail to the immediate vicinity if you wanted to, but I don't see any reason why, if we're not going to control change of site plan, um, notice requirement, if, if the plan, my plan is not to change the site plan, nobody brought it up prior to tonight that that, something's wrong with that code. And we only use special permits once or twice, so it may not be fun to mail to, you may not get any response, but that generally tells you, probably people are okay with what's happening.
But you've covered the bases.
But when the one thing isn't, and that's why you paid all the money prior to that.
Okay, so this is a member item, do you want to put, have it put on, placed on agendas to create a policy?
I'd like to direct Jeff to write the code update for the special permits to have the same notification requirements as the site.
But it's a member item.
Oh.
Jeff, what are you, he's, he's, he's.
Yeah, I think, I think you should put it on the next agenda.
Yeah. Well, we can't make that decision until it's back in public and noticed as a, an agenda item. Member items are like, hey, this is something I want to do, let's put it on the next agenda, so the public.
Can he have that code brought forward prior to that, or do we?
We direct him, we direct him based on what's been publicly noticed on the agenda.
Just in case the public wants to call in and make.
All right, very good. We'll put it on.
On the agenda.
It should be small and short and sweet, but if you want to put it on the next agenda, I think that'd be great.
Because member items typically are things, you know, we don't take any action as a board in a member item, it's like, hey, I want to do this, can we put it on the next agenda, or?
Yep.
You know, that, that's all this is.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Yep.
And in the meantime, I can answer the average cost of a mailing, I, the, second is some problems setting the mailing, I just don't feel it's having the impact, it at least having the.
Okay, we'll take a look.
That's all I'm saying, if you want to include the cost in the application fee, I'm going to that too.